implemented all these things and we're still at 147 calls. That kind of concerns me.
This concerns me from a safety standpoint, like community safety.
I, I, I'm a bit torn because I think part of it was related to barrel. I think part of it is related unfortunately to today's society. They have made an effort to implement all of the measures that adhere to our tier one requirements minus the 24 hour security guard. I don't think we're here to run them out of business, but then I do also have the concerns over the safety. But again, it's the nature of the business and it's the nature of the hotel. I just.
I mean, I think at this point, if I had a business where there were this many calls for service happening, I would have long ago at least hired a part-time security officer.
If you can afford it.
Well.
That, that's the affordability is the issue.
I, I think that it depends on what we want. Do we want a cheap place for people to, as the term that's been used frequently, transient housing where, where you can't afford security and therefore these things continue? I, I think, I think the community has made clear what it is that they want. It's not that sort of establishment. If they can't afford to be able to have security there and they still have this issue, then I think that it speaks for itself.
Well, this is, this is why the, the volume history, the history is important to me to, to, to be able to make a clear decision. I'm with Councilmember Shepherd on this. It's, it's torn because 115, 147 calls, I mean, one call per room, a ratio of one seems like a lot, as, as the mayor pointed out. 115 is a lot. 147, obviously, even if you consider barrel in there, there's, that, that's still, there are some where there's meet the citizen or welfare checks and I, I don't want to discourage people from calling the police. At the same time, they have that opportunity as well to, to be proactive in some of those activities. This hotel has been around for several years and either as a Red Roof Inn or under previous ownership elsewhere. We've had, this is only the second time we've met, we've only had four hotels, I think, since I've been on council that have gone through this type of review. It's eas, there are things you can do to stay under the ratio of one. In fact, two other hotels in the city of Jersey Village probably have similar price points and are under this ratio.
Well, the other thing which I was thinking about too is if, let's say they are out of business because they can't afford the security, then we're going to have potential crime there anyway because it's going to be an empty building, right?
Well, I mean, I'm no law enforcement officer, but I suspect being able to patrol an empty building and if someone's there that's not supposed to be there, that's a lot easier to deal with than an occupied place that seems to have a lot of criminal activity going on behind closed doors.
So when we move, if we were to move from one tier to the other, how long does it take to fall back into compliance and move back down?
So this is, this analysis is done annually and so it would be next, at the end of 2024, so January 2025 is when we would look at it again?
I think, especially with that information, I think they need to, I think we need to make it tier two. I think the ordinance is there for a reason. I think it helps protect the citizens. I think it helps alleviate the strain on the police, our resources we have that are already costly and I think it'll free some, hopefully help take care of some of that. I mean, we need them to be all over the city of Jersey Village, not just a hotel.
Plus it'll give us some time to see if the 2024 improvements actually pay off, right? I mean, it's not even been a year for most of these.
So just so council's aware, we, we are hitting seven o'clock, which is when we're supposed to start our regular meeting. Obviously we're, we're going to go ahead and we're, we're going to finish this and the other appeal very, hopefully as quickly as we can. So I apologize folks, we're just running a little over time. But if, if it sounds like, at least as far as I can tell, most of council at least kind of has an idea where they're going on this. Does someone want to make a motion and we can go from there? There's not a proposed motion, but the, the actual resolution, I believe, or maybe it's a.
Is it 24? Sorry.
It's a proposed order, 20, yeah, it's on page 25 of the PDF. So just to be clear.
I'm looking for where to clarify, to read it. Is it's.
I, I think, I think that, so the, the proposed order would be to approve order number 2025 dash zero two, and then there's the two options in the order.
Okay, I would like to make a motion, 2025 dash two, to reclassify Mi Vahan LLC DBA Red Roof Inn as a tier two hotel. Is that what I meant to say? Was that okay?
Yeah, let's, so we have a motion to approve of order 2025 dash zero two, classifying Mi Vahan LLC DBA Red Roof Inn as a tier two hotel.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The order is approved unanimously. So we are going to come back to, we had, we had already called the public hearing for Quality Inn. Sir, has your, has your attorney arrived?
Somehow they can't make it.
Oh, he cannot make it? Okay. All right. Would you like to speak at this time regarding your appeal?
No, I was going for next appeal with my attorneys.
I'm sorry?
I was going for next hearing with the attorney.
I think, what options do we have, Austin? Is this it or?
Because I cannot answer those languages, you know.
So tonight the, the board should decide one way or another if it's a tier one or a tier two, the, any further appeal would be to, to the courts.
Okay. Unfortunately, sir, we're, we're going to have to deal with this one way or another. You do have your, I believe there was a written appeal that was made. So anything you want to say at all? No? Okay. A discussion amongst the board on this item. I guess we'll, we'll go ahead and, is there any other member of the public that wishes to speak regarding this appeal of the, hold on one second, let me make sure I get the correct. Regarding this appeal of classification of Vital for LLC doing business as Quality Inn, 17550 Northwest Freeway, Jersey Village. There being no other member of the public wishing to speak on this item. We'll now close the public hearing on, on this at 7:03 PM, which does bring us to the actual discussion amongst the board regarding the appeal. In this case, it looks like there are 54 hotel rooms. There were 66 calls for service for a ratio of 1.22.
Chief, do you have any of the, actually, wait, I should, is it, can I ask him this question now?
Of course you have.
The, I just wanted to ask the same information about the, you called them crime prevention time.
Yeah, so in 2023, we did, we, we logged 72 crime preventions at that location. In 2024, we logged 333 crime preventions at that location. And then so far in 2025, we've logged 55 crime preventions at that location.
Thank you. With that and the lack of any other, like, information, I, in my opinion would be to do the same thing, classify as a tier two and then let's, it gets, it gets reevaluated on its own.
Okay. The order we have, it's, the proposed order is order number 2025 dash zero one. Yeah, no problem. Or if you want, so the order would, the, the proposed motion would be to move to approve order number 2025 dash zero one, finding that Vital for LLC DBA Quality Suites is classified as a tier two hotel. Is that the motion you're making?
I would like to make that motion, yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board on this? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The order is approved unanimously. And so I believe, unless, I think that was it for this particular agenda. Is that correct? Okay. Okay, with that, the, this meeting of the Jersey Village Property Standards Board is adjourned. And folks, if you will give us just a few minutes so we can take a quick break, then we'll begin our, our regular meeting. So I apologize for us running a little bit late. Okay, folks, I'm going to go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of the Jersey Village City Council for Monday, March 17th, 2025. The time is now 7:12 PM. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum of council present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Next up, I will present the invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you'll please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we approach you this evening with gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community and for the many blessings you have given us. As we gather to make decisions for the good of Jersey Village, we ask for your wisdom to guide us, your peace to steady us, and your grace to unite us. Lord, we lift up those in our city who are facing struggles, those dealing with illness, loss, or uncertainty. May they find comfort in your presence and strength in the support of their neighbors. Help us to be a community that lifts one another up, showing kindness and compassion in both word and action. We also pray for our first responders, our police officers, firefighters, and emergency personnel, who dedicate themselves to protecting and serving our community. Watch over them in their duties, grant them strength in times of challenge, and keep them safe as they place themselves in harm's way for the well-being of others. May they always feel our gratitude and support. In a world often divided by anger and fear, we ask for your help in being instruments of understanding and unity. Remind us to listen with open hearts, to lead with humility, and to seek what is just and right for our entire community. May our words and decisions tonight reflect the responsibility entrusted to us, always with a commitment to serving our neighbors with integrity and fairness. Bless this meeting and all who are here, and may the work we do bring about good for our city and those we are called to serve. We ask all these things in your holy name. Amen. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to a couple of presentations. The first is presentation of Employee of the Month Award for March 2025, Austin Bleece.
Mayor, councilors, our employee of the month is unable to be here tonight. He had a family commitment, but I do just want to quickly recognize Jason Mahan, our utility supervisor, as the March 2025 Employee of the Month. He's done a fantastic job in making that whole department much more operationally efficient and with a great culture. He's done a lot of things going above and beyond, especially with the line breaks that we've seen recently. But so just want to read one quote here from Danielle, his supervisor. I'm truly grateful to have Jason on our team. His leadership work ethic and dedication directly contribute to the department's success and his ability to remain calm under pressure makes him a vital asset to our city. So just want to say congratulations to Jason.
Well, congratulations, Jason. And in public works, being calm under pressure is definitely a, an attribute, especially when other stuff is not so calm under pressure. Thank you. The next presentation we have is TPCA Award presentation by Chief Danny Keel.
I'm taller and better looking, so. So Chief Keel asked me to speak. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and citizens of Jersey Village and guests. My name is Jeffrey Burt. I am the chief of police for the Tomball Police Department, and I am honored this evening to be representing the Texas Police Chiefs Association Foundation and their accreditation committee. The Texas Police, the, the Texas Police Chiefs Association is an association made up of about 1,700 professional law enforcement executives throughout the state who are dedicated to improving the delivery of, of, of services. I'm here this evening to present Jersey Village Police Department with a, with a, with a certificate of accreditation for achieving compliance with the Texas Law Enforcement Agency's best practices. So several years ago, the TPCA developed an accreditation program for Texas law enforcement. And many of you are already aware of accreditation programs. There's, if you're in, in medicine, if you're in schools or universities, there are programs of professional excellence that require independent proof of and compliance with a set of rigorous standards. And the TPCA's best practices accreditation program is just that for law enforcement. There's 173 very challenging standards for Texas law enforcement, and these standards address the full range that you would expect to see in a law enforcement agency, from pursuits and use of force to protection of citizens' rights, to racial profiling, to officers' training, policies on arrests, seizure, and, and, and detention, patrol and investigative services, and property and evidence. And that's just a few. It's a, a list where officers and the chief has to go through every single policy he or she has to make sure that they are compliant with the very best practices of the state. So this program as a result has become the new gold standard in law enforcement in Texas, and agencies across the state, many are actively trying to get, get this accreditation. But I, what's important to me and for, I think it's important for you all to know is this is an absolutely voluntary program. No one forced the agency to participate. Approximately two years ago, Chief Keel and the Jersey Village Police Department began the process of proving its compliance with these difficult standards. And they had to prove their compliance to well-trained, independent assessors. I was not one of them. But, but it was not easy to comply nonetheless. The agency had to do a complete audit of all its policies, procedures, training, and operations in order to meet these standards, and in some cases, probably have to rewrite a few policies as well. The process culminated in August of last year when trained assessors, police executives, some retired chiefs of police from other parts of the state made an onsite inspection of the agency. It's a two-day, pretty grueling process when you have somebody that's interviewing staff, inspecting facilities and operations, and riding with field officers, and you don't get to pick the field officer, hey, ride with that guy. Nope, they go with whoever they want. So you're, it's one of those, and they ensured compliance with all the standards. Their report was sent to the Texas Accreditation Committee comprised of nine serving police chiefs from around the state who reviewed the report and voted to award accredited status to the Jersey Village Police Department. The vote was unanimous. So well done. I want to point out in the, the state of Texas, there's 2,800 law enforcement agencies, 2,800. 218 agencies are right around 7% are accredited, and that's impressive. You know, from big agencies to small agencies to medium size, just about 7%. So what does this mean to you? And in my mind, it means and can assure the council and the citizens of Jersey Village, Texas, that your agency is operating in a manner that reflects the very best current practices of Texas law enforcement. It means your agency is one of the very best in the state. The certificate we present this evening is a symbol of professional excellence, but the real value of the program is the process that, that Chief Keel and all of his officers and his professional staff went through to get the, went through to attain it. And it's not the end of the process. It's ongoing. We'll be back in four years with the same, like, bad mustaches and, well, I shaved, but I can't grow a mustache, but anyway, the same bad mustaches, same bad questions, and but we'll put them through another rigorous standard of tests. But your police department has proven to trained and independent assessors that you are one of the very best in our state, and I, as I am very proud of Chief Keel and his great team, I, I hope you are as well. So well done, sir. We have a certificate that we give everyone. It's a lot of words and squiggly language, but basically it says, "Well done" to your entire department. And if, and if Chief Keel's anything like me, yes, it's on him, but it's really on the men and women in the back of the room who are doing the lift every single day and who are doing, doing what they can to follow the policies and procedures that, that we write and put forward. So well done, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all the men and women back here. I think we've got like two-thirds of the police department here, maybe. Maybe not quite enough. But thank you to all of you for all the hard work that you guys put in to make this department as, even though you get, you got that piece of paper that tells us, that assures us what we already knew, which is that you guys are some of the best law enforcement agencies, one of the best law enforcement agencies in the state, or I dare say in the countries. Thank you so much for all of your hard work. Okay, with that, we have a joint public hearing. Real quickly, just want to ask our city secretary, do we have a quorum of the Planning and Zoning Commission here? Our chairman says that we do.
Yes, we do. Yes, sir, we do.
Fantastic. We do have a quorum of planning and zoning present. So we're going to move to item D1, conduct a joint public hearing with the Jersey Village Planning and Zoning Commission for the purpose of receiving oral comments from any interested persons concerning proposed zoning amendment changes so that the area of land formerly identified as District D, Jersey Village Crossing District, is rezoned into two zoning districts identified as zoning District H, Industrial District, and zoning District K, Fifth Business District, and that the zoning distinction for portions of the area of land formerly identified as District K, Fifth Business District, is rezoned into District F, First Business District. And it's got my name on it, so we're just going to go ahead and conduct the public hearing. So we'll now conduct the public hearing. The time is currently 7:23 PM, and I'm just double checking. I don't think I saw any comment cards that mentioned this. It looks like everything else is about some other subject. So none of the public comment cards I have is for this public hearing. Was there anyone who thought that they were submitting a public comment card for this public hearing and it's not? Seeing none? Okay. And Courtney, I assume you don't have any other cards over there?
No, sir.
Okay, just want to be sure. Then I am going to go ahead and close, and there's nothing we need from the Planning and Zoning Commission for this, right? Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing at 7:24 PM. Thank you very much. That brings us to citizen comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. First card I have is from Michael Stenbridge.
Good evening. Happy Sam Patty's Day. They're on Michael Stenbridge 15422 Jersey Drive. They're building a, a really nice house next door. It looks like it'll be very beautiful. But the stakes that outline the property line look like they're a little bit over to the left. But the stakes that outline the property line look like they're a little bit over to the left. And there's three beams. I don't know if they're support beams because the beam... Because the perpendicular beams are put into concrete or not, but they look like they might be right on our proper line, or a few might be a little bit over. And there's some large piles of dirt, and I think it's the dirt that they dug out when they laid the concrete. But I don't know, my wife and I don't know if it's going to be there permanently or what's going to happen to it. I contacted Austin Blyce by email. He was very informative, got back to me, and said he would pass it along to the building official. The building official's name is Evan, and he said he would go out Monday. Monday, myself and my whole family, my wife, were in California, so he wouldn't have had any chance to contact us or anything. So I haven't heard anything beyond that. But we did get into the elevations, and Architectura came out and talked to us. But then we were informed that we were bumped to second round. And I don't know, I'm assuming that might be because my wife might need a handicap lift or a ramp or something like that. And so that may involve something that's involved with the state, and that may be what the delay is. But I just had those concerns. That's all, and hope you all have a nice St. Patty's Day. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. And yeah, definitely, the building official would definitely be the one that's going to be able to tell you, you know, what's going on with that, yeah. Okay, the next card I have is from Jackie Baba.
Hi there. It's my understanding that the bid for the next phase of the reconstruction for Australian Solomon is going to be decided today. I just want to give you a heads up. The Congo Lane project is still going on, and it's just been a nightmare. And it's not just me. It's like most of my neighbors. The construction company that you guys hired, there's been so many mistakes made. There's been so many miscommunications. You know, the construction crews will tell me one thing, and then their, you know, head honcho guy will tell me another. And then Tim, poor Tim and Bob, I mean, they've just been, God bless them, they have been like, you know, trying to correct all their mistakes that they've made. And I'm not sure if this company is bidding on the Australian Solomon project, but I just hope that it's not going to be the same company that's going to be doing that Phase Two of, you know, this project, because it's just been a nightmare. And that's all I have to say. So please take that into consideration. I mean, I know that money is a factor and the funding and everything, but let me tell you, it's quality. You know, the quality of the work really matters. And I mean, our street, every sidewalk, every driveway has a different shade of concrete. Even the mailbox brick that they brought in doesn't match any of our brick, any of our home's exterior. I mean, the list is so long. I could go on and on and on. And also, that corner where they have the construction site, the empty lot, it's my understanding that that's going to be for the Phase Two as well, for the Australian Solomon project? Is that going to be where they bring their tractors and their dirt and...
That's something that the selected contractor would have to work out with that property owner. I don't know where their staging facility would be.
Okay. Well, God, I hope it's not going to be there. The dust is unbearable. And it's, that's the three of us, me, Cheryl, and June and Mike, us three that are right there across the street from it, and then there's Bob, right behind him on Australia. We're just a big dust ball. I mean, our patios, my pool, my cars, it's just horrible. I mean, you guys have to take into consideration the residents that are, you know, have to do this for another year. So I hope that whatever contract you guys do with the next construction, there's got to be another area within Jersey Village that is away from residents' homes that they can have their staging point with their tractors and their construction and their dirt and their dust balls. And the deliveries at 5:00 and 4:30 AM in the morning with their big trucks that we hear, you know, that's another thing, with the noise and the pounding and what have you. So that's all I have to say about that, but please take that into consideration. I think, Austin, you're the one that actually does the contract and what have you, or decides on the company.
The council will vote on that topic tonight, but we can certainly work with the contractor and the staging location.
And also, just to clarify, is the contractor for the... I'm sorry, for Congo, yes. For Congo, is that contractor currently one of the ones being considered for this, for the...
The contractor for Congo is Environmental Allies, and the recommendation for the contractor is not Environmental Allies for Australian Solomon.
Okay.
Oh, so they're not... Okay, good.
Yeah. That's not the recommendation that's made, so... So just to answer your question about whether it's the same contractor that's being recommended.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next comment card I have is from Cheryl Burgess.
Hello. I wrote mine out, but Jackie took, like, half of my comments. I live across the street from her. I live across from the empty lot, 15801 Congo. What I'd like to say is that the lowest bidder is not always the best. These are just some issues that I've encountered. The workers are very inconsiderate to me and my property. I'm constantly picking up trash from my side yard for months. Water bottles, napkins, lunch bags, paper bags, plastic bags, it's just, in a week, I can fill up a garbage can. They block my drive. I have a side driveway on Australia. They block my driveway because they park on that whole side. My son parks on that driveway. We're having to find workers to move their cars so he can get out to go to work. They use my outside water faucet without my permission. They have taken off the insulated cover that stays on year-round unless I'm going to do something with the water hose or whatever. They wash their hands, they fill their buckets, they do whatever, and then as they... It's a very, you have to, it's a hard turn. If you don't hard-turn it, it leaks. I've come home many times, and it's been leaking down the driveway. Large trucks, they use my side driveway to back in and out to make their line go straight into the empty lot. So, and I've actually shown Tim, from the sidewalk to the street, I guess it's called a bib or whatever it's called, it's completely cracked. The curb around that driveway is completely ruined. So I was going to ask the city to replace that, but now I know with Congo-Australia process, it'll be replaced anyway, so I'm good with that. They've knocked over my brick mailbox and then, like, pretended like they weren't the one that did it. And like Jackie said, we got bricks today, and it does not match my house at all. And the last thing is that they were supposed to put down topsoil when they replaced the grass from the sidewalk to the street. No topsoil, and I did not know that. Again, my buddy Tim, he told, you know, he came by and he looked, and he made him redo it. They put down dead grass as far as I'm concerned now. So I just, I implore you all to not employ these people, this company, for the next installment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl. And I will say, obviously, there'll be more discussion, I'm sure, when we get to that item. But the emphasis on quality and doing some additional look into the general satisfaction with the work of contractors is, obviously, was a point of emphasis with this next project, so I agree with you. That's a problem. Thank you, though. Thank you for letting us know. Next comment card I have is from Jim Fields.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jim Fields. I live at 16413 St. Hillier. And Aaron Gobrah, I see you got your, everybody's got their green shirts on. Rest of you get pinched. I want to thank, off the bat, is our new City Secretary, Courtney Ruth- Rutherford, I hope I pronounced it correctly. When I do FOIA requests, she's always prompt, very thorough, and it's a pleasure. She's always, you can tell she's service-oriented to make sure all my questions are answered. The first thing I want to say, these are improvements I'd like to suggest for the city and city council to look into. I think this would be good for Commerce, is just extend the sidewalk all the way down, from where Harbor Freight is all the way to CVS. I was watching this woman the other day. She had a baby in the front in a carriage, and she was, you know, having a hard time. And I think we extend that. That's good for everybody. The only problem, there's a bridge there, and they probably have to build some sort of sidewalk, so I'd hope you consider that. The other thing I'd like to suggest is, on Village Drive, it's very difficult for all these people to have a place to park their cars. You know, you park them on the, you know, the street's narrow. There's a piece of property on there that is owned by an individual that I was going to make a recommendation, if the city could look into this, to purchase that property and turn that into a parking place for all the residents on Village Drive. This is right at Rio Grande and Village Drive, and they're always having problems. I was talking to one guy one time, and he can't park his car on Village Drive because they always knock off his mirrors. Okay, moving on here, I was going to say, these are things I'm hoping we can get addressed. We have these trucks that are parked on the grass on the weekends and evenings. Hopefully, we can get that resolved. It's gotten worse. We used to have one truck, now there's two trucks. There's cut logs on Senate, big ones. They've been there for about a month. The large hole on 29529, the only reason why I think that is important, somebody could fall into it, sue the city, that's been a year since I reported that one. The light pole down on Castle Bridge is still down. That's been almost four months. And there's still some potholes on Castle Bridge. And what else here? Okay. The street collapsing between the parking lot and Sam is getting worse. Hope to look into that. Flower bed is still missing on the corner of Village Green and Village Drive. I do see improvement on the left side, but the right side is still not there. We still have that energized engine, commercial business still operating this weekend. They had their forklift on. That's just not good for residents who want to live here or want to buy here. I'm sure it affects the property values. And the car lot full of cars, many of them don't have license plate. One of them didn't even have an engine in it, so... Again, that's not good for our image of our city. Okay. 290 and West Road entrance, the flower bed has been damaged and has some bricks moving. That's been about three or four months. And I hope that you can look and fix that too for our image. And the striping on Village Drive, and maybe look at other places, is non-existent. Supposed to be two lines on there, and if we could get that fixed, that would really be great. Thank you again for your time.
Great. Thank you, Jim. And the next comment card I have is from, and I apologize, is it Sam Bowling? I'm having a little hard time reading it. I'm hoping I got that right.
Good evening. I live at 15614 Congo. I'm probably one of the last ones that still has cones and everything up. We have a pressure pipe from a sump basin that comes from the back. They've still yet to finish fixing this. They have messed it up thoroughly. I still have the front, they're supposed to make everything back to where it was as good or better, right? It's not. They put concrete stabilizer in front of my house, and, you know, from the sidewalk to the curb, and then they put, you know, a very thin layer of topsoil. Nothing's going to grow in there. They put infertile soil in there. So we've talked to the superintendent. I've talked to Bob several times. They've done everything they can. They promised that they're going to fix this. They promised they're going to fix that. It's still not fixed. And I also have the back of my mailbox, I left my mailbox sitting on my tree for about three months. So when they put it back in, they put it back in on the wrong side of the concrete pad. The concrete pad is not even, I mean, the mailbox pad, it's not even straight. It's crooked. There's nothing about it that's straight. The quality of work is just piss-poor, I'm sorry to say, but I want my stuff fixed and fixed right, and it should be. We pay taxes. We do everything we're supposed to do, and we get half then, you know, our poor work, you know, back. That's all I've got to say. I need it done.
Great, thank you. Austin, do you know if this has been addressed? Obviously, it's not the first contractor we've had an issue with, with the whole topsoil question, or the...
Yeah, I know Tim has been, and Tim and Bob have both been monitoring it, and they're making sure that that gets done before we close out the final check and everything. So there'll be the walkthrough. They'll have to fix all the punch list items, so it might not be done today, but it will get done before we pay out the last bill.
Okay. So for folks who are concerned about the Congo Street project and things being left unfinished, it will make sure that that punch list is actually checked and not just left undone, so...
Is there, how are we keeping track of all the complaints, though? Like, is there a place for all the citizens that it's affecting to report all of this? I just want to make sure, like, how are we ensuring that we have a comprehensive list of what needs to be done versus just what we assume?
Tim has been the point person for all these things. I know he's talked with, I'm going to guess, almost every resident, or at least everybody that reaches out, all talks with Tim, so he's got his list of everything that, making sure we've got a... When we go through the walkthrough and everything, make sure everything gets addressed.
Yeah, and also keep in mind that the punch list will contain, I mean, the punch list contains items of things that their contractor required to do, and so before those things are signed off on, I assume we're all putting eyes on things, yeah. That's what I thought, so thank you very much. Okay. The next comment card I have is from, and I apologize, is that... Is that Harrison? Andy Harrison? Hunzaker. Oh, sorry, Andy. I should have known that last name. I recognize that name. Take your time.
Thank you. I try not to use five minutes. My talk is about the city manager. Several, several years ago, we didn't have a city manager. The mayor ran it. And I understand the city manager gets a six-figure income, and he has an assistant with a six-figure income, and there probably wouldn't be any reason why the mayor couldn't have a six-figure income. I have a very good friend of mine that is in Darien, Connecticut, and he is the mayor there, and he gets about a six-figure income. He retired from McKinsey and some other financial places, which I'm sure we have several here in this city that could also take over the city manager's position as the mayor. And the reason I say that is, in the past, I would ask, there are a couple of y'all that are running for reelection, I think, to the council. And we had a situation here where the police chief died, and his brother was working for HPD, and they hired him, the city council did. We didn't have a city manager. And at that time, you had to live in the village. And it was late in the evening, and it was before so much of Mothers Against Drunk Driving, okay? So this police chief, new police chief, came over from HPD, bought a house. The night he bought a house, he got hold of one of the officers that was working that evening to come pick him up, and he went and got in the patrol car, which is perfectly all right, with a beer. Well, a city council person was out trying to see what this chief was doing and found him with that alcoholic beverage in his hand and fired him on the spot. Can any of you fire anybody in here? You got to go to city manager, right? And what I heard several times tonight, people were talking about, "I have a problem on Congo. I have a problem here. I have a problem there." And what are we going to do? And as the city manager is the head man of the city, not the mayor, the mayor turned to him and said, "What are we going to do? And we're going to have this list, and we're going to do this about it," which I think is admirable. But I would like to have us go back to a strong city manager, I mean, city mayor position and eliminate the city manager position. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. I will say this, number one, don't wish that sort of trouble on me. But I'll just say, I can't, I can't, I can't speak too much to it because it's not on the agenda. It's a charter issue, but...
I know.
I'll just say, as a matter of fact, that over the last several decades, most cities have gone away from the strong mayor tradition. There are still a few out there, mostly big cities. And I think there may be a reason for that, but that's about as far as I can really go without breaking... far as I can really go without breaking any laws.
When is our charter up? Can I ask that?
Well, there's a, there, there's a charter amendment actually on the ballot for this election coming up, so the next time the charter could be, if that, if that change, if that is approved, the next time the charter could be changed, I think is another two years after that, so.
Okay, because I was, thank you.
Yep, no problem, thank you. Oof, don't even want that kind of trouble. Next card I have is from Jeff Kopecchi.
Jeff Kopecchi, 16125 Delosier. I want to thank the city and the city council for beautifying Senate and Lakeview and the flower beds, they've been working like beavers out there. One other thing I got is, I brought it up to the city's assistant city manager twice about these light poles, they're beautiful, they put these light poles in front of my house, I watched them install them, and when they installed them, they installed them with a chain instead of using a nylon sling. And when they pulled them up, they scrapped, they scraped all of the powder coat off of them, and especially at the top of the crown where the light is, almost all that paint is missing on the one of mine. But the, the strange thing is, is they broke the bolts on the electrical cover that covers it up, so they took duct tape and they just wrapped black duct tape around it. And that's not just mine, it's all the way down the street, there's several of them, not just one, there's several of them like that. So I, I mean, we paid good money for it, they should come back and correct what they did and what they messed up, because, you know, it's, you know, I know those lights weren't cheap, and they actually add a lot to the city in my opinion, because they are much better than a galvanized pole, you know? So, the other thing I've got to bring up tonight is over here along Hempstead Highway from Britmore to the Beltway, it's getting to be a dumping ground over there. There's construction material, there's tires, there's all kinds of stuff, and they've already got, on the 290 side, they've dumped so much, that now they're starting to dump on the railroad track side. And from what I gather, from what I looked up and looked on these maps, it is, it is a Jersey, part of that is Jersey Village City Limits, but there's no dumping signs or nothing over there, so I would, I just think if we could look into putting signs and cleaning that up, because that is a gateway into Jersey Village. So, that's all I have to say tonight, thank you and appreciate it.
I appreciate that Jeff, we'll definitely look into it, I, I doubt that the, that somebody dumping over there says there's no signs, that must mean I'm okay, they probably know what they're doing is breaking the law, but, but it's still something that, if, if it's, at least the part that's in the city, we could certainly, hopefully, leave that up to JV PD to figure out the best way to deal with it, if it's something that, that's, they've got their ways, I'll let them handle it. But thank you for bringing that to our attention, and, and we'll, I think we have to go through center point regarding the, the light poles, so we'll, we'll look into that as well. The next comment card I have is from Ben Blumenthal.
My name is Ben Blumenthal, I live on 15913 Lakeview Drive. I come before you today angry about the council and mayor decision to demolish the city pool at last month's meeting. I use the pool every year, the last decade I've lived here. I took my family to that pool three times a week last year, and I think it was destroyed under a false sense of urgency with, you know, obviously no replacement approved. So, yes, the pool is not up to code, but that didn't make it materially dangerous and in need of immediate destruction. By that logic, you should probably demolish nearly every home in Jersey Village. How many of your homes are up to code with interconnected fire alarms or childproof outlets? I mean, you know, surely you've heard of grandfather clauses. Despite the pool not turning over water as rapidly as it currently requires at 13 hours, it was still grandfathered in. I never saw any biological growth or felt that the water quality was unsafe whenever I went there. I've seen no water quality tests showing that the water was unsafe. I, I, you know, perhaps the baby pool wasn't safe because it was missing the SVRS system and ADA compliance issue, however, it was closed last year, which seemed like a simple option to have continued this year until a new pool could have been approved. In my opinion, the city's plan to take seven to 12-year-olds to Hurricane Harbor Waterpark each week as part of the summer camp is less safe than having kept the old pool open. Yes, I hear the old pool had leaks and cracks, but I doubt that they were severe enough to warrant the pool's immediate destruction. However, we will never know, as objective quantitative tests for the minimal cost of, I believe it was about $5,000, were never completed. And, you know, I was thinking back to the analogy of the homes, you know, how many of our homes have cracks? You know, my home has cracks, I'm not going to demolish my house, I mean, I'd try to figure out if it was a structural thing that, you know, could last another year if it needed to be done, you know, immediately. Yes, the community, pool committee voted five to seven for the most expensive pool replacement option, and both bonds in 23 and 24 were also the most expensive option, failing at, you know, roughly the same amount, 58%. However, neither the pool committee nor the voters endorsed destruction of the old pool without an approved replacement. Yes, any pool replacement will necessitate the demolition of the old pool, I understand that. However, until a new pool is approved, there is no reason to destroy the old pool. I thank Connie Rossi for sharing that insight before last month's vote, and for that lone vote against destruction. Finally, I do not appreciate the fact that official emails and letters did not seek input from the electorate regarding the pool's destruction, not, not the bonds or anything else, but just the simple act of the destruction beforehand, and that only in the past few days has it even been noted that it was approved and now that destruction is complete. With the pool now gone, you've robbed my family and others of summer fun and memories made in Jersey Village. The only question now is how many summers have we lost? One summer? Two summers? Three summers? So in closing, the old pool surely could have served its purpose for another year or two until a replacement design and funding could have been approved. There was no immediate urgency to the safety or operational cost concerns, and destruction was not the will of the people that you represent. Therefore, please make haste with pool rebuilding to correct the error in this judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll have a whole topic on the pool towards the end of the meeting, so I encourage you to stick around. Next comment card I have is from Brian McCauley.
All right, appreciate it. I'm glad I got to go after you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow Jersey Village residents. My name is Brian McCauley, and I've called Jersey Village home since 2011. My three kids have swum in our swimming pool and swimming team since my eldest was in kindergarten. Splashing in that old Clark Henry pool year after year, like you, we've waited for a new pool through two bond elections and endless debates. Watching it leak and crumble, but we can't wait another two years for another bond vote. We need to act and start planning now. That is why I am proposing we form a community group to organize a crowdfunding campaign for a new city pool, a practical one. One with a competition-ready lap pool for our swim teams, splash pad for the kids, and a clubhouse for events. Not a $10 million extravaganza, but a smart facility that we can build for maybe $3, $4 million, and it would be in line with costs of similar pools in small Texas cities. As a libertarian, I believe that small government and letting people keep their hard-earned money, I don't think it's right to force people to pay for things that is against their will, like those big bonds tried to do. Voluntary funding is better, and that's what this is about. We rally 20% of our 3,300 households, about 670 families, to pitch in. They can choose the amount that they donate, from five, say $50 to $5,000. Local businesses can join with sponsorships of $5,000 to $100,000, et cetera, earning perks, like naming rights, et cetera. Crowdfunding has worked other locations. Examples are parking lots in Vermont, arcades in Ohio, and even the Statue of Liberty's pedestal was paid for by an early form of crowdfunding. Here, with 7,700 people who love this town, we can raise maybe $2 to $3 million ourselves, paired with business sponsorships, not $10 million worth of debt. I'm asking for your support, city council, endorse this voluntary effort and help us navigate things like permits and improve incentives to boost donations. Things like lifetime pool memberships for big donors, things like putting names on bricks, benches, or plaques at the facility. Maybe reserve the current site or seed funds if we are able to succeed, but to keep it minimal, no heavy tax burden. And I'm asking you, my neighbors here, and watching at home, if you guys would back this too, because this pool could be ours, built by choice, not by mandate. It's not fair to ask those who have not and do not intend to use the pool to carry the burden either. I'm stepping up and volunteering to lead this group, and I'm actually pledging $3,000 of my own money and savings to kick it off. I'm putting skin in the game, and I'm showing that I'm serious about this. I'm serious about giving our kids and your kids a pool we deserve, soon, not years from now. But I can't do it alone, I need help. Volunteers, folks to help organize, spread the word, and reach out to businesses. If you're willing to help and lead with me, please raise your hand or catch me after the fact, and we'll start small. We can do meetings, a website, a plan, and then we can go big together. I'll keep it a little bit shorter than I intended, I don't want to waste everybody's time, but I think the $10 million bond had good intentions, but the voters decided twice not to pass it. I think this would be different. Grassroots, affordable, voluntary, and we've waited since 2011 through every swim season for the old pool to fall apart. After a two-year delay, it's not an option. So I ask the council, will you back this? Will you approve incentives, not mandates? And will you join me, the community, in funding it our way? Let's make Jersey Village a place where we don't just dream of a pool, we crowdfunded it into existence, and it starts today, because voluntary action beats government force every time. Thank you.
Well, thank you Brian, I, I just want to credit you Brian for coming forward with a solution, and not just asking about, you know, or not just criticizing, but actually coming up with an idea. I will admit, that might be the first libertarian proposal for government incentives I've ever seen, but, but I, no, I, I like where you're coming from with trying to think creatively about this. Like I said, we do have an item about the pool, very wide open discussion about the pool coming up in the agenda, so we'll, we'll get around to that. The last comment card I have, and I assume there were no other comment cards that came during our stretch here, Kimberly Now.
My name is Kimberly Now, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 42nd installment, picture it, Jersey Village, 1955. Not yet incorporated as a municipality, but the early residents were busy settling into newly-built homes and making plans to worship locally into the future. According to the meeting minutes to begin the organization of a Baptist church for Jersey Village, on April 28, 1955, at 7:30 PM, Frank and Janice Hardelick hosted the meeting at their 15518 Monalaua home. Opening the meeting was prayer by Chris Robinson and song service directed by Gabriel Francis. Participating for discussion and temporary office nominations was Dr. James Parker as moderator of the organization, Frank Hardelick as assistant moderator, and Don Robinson as clerk. Dr. Parker read the recommended method of organization procedure for a church, and through a discussion on the relative merits for admission or for a church, was the unanimous decision to construct a church facility. Clark Henry and Leroy Kennedy stated they would donate a church site of adequate proportion in Jersey Village. They would also donate a lakeside lot as a site for the church pastorium. Guests included Dr. Ross Dillon of the Union Baptist Association, who reiterated the organizational procedure and qualifications for the formation of a Baptist church, and went to, went to counsel with the association for its purpose. Decided upon and adopted was the name Jersey Village Baptist Church, with the first service to be held in the Jersey Village Office Building on Sunday, May 1, 1955, at 8:30 AM. Leroy Kennedy closed the meeting in prayer. A resolution from the deacons of the Garden Oaks Baptist Church was approved to dismiss the membership of the pending charter members of the Jersey Village Baptist Church to be organized on May 22, of which families included the Henrys, Kennedys, Robinsons, Hardelicks, Deans, Wilkersons, and Grishams. On June 30, 1955, these 42 persons were declared charter members, and overall church membership quickly grew to 96. The Eagle Enquirer issued on May 19, 1955, included the church location as the old F&amp;M Dairy on Hempstead Road. Letterhead dated August 15, 1956, from First Baptist Church, Jersey Village, Route 9, Box 770, announced an important event for Sunday, August 19, after morning worship to gather on the church site for a formal groundbreaking service for our chapel and educational building. The three men sharing one shovel in the photograph of the groundbreaking were new pastor Dr. E.E. Pally, Frank Hardelick, and Chris Robinson. There is also a roadside photograph of the Jersey Village City Limits sign stating a population of 250. While numerous church members assisted in helping to build the church, a letter to Pastor Pally from Brown and Roots Division Manager, Mr. Woodfin, expressed the commitment to see through the completion of construction, and if his unforeseen passing on, the letter would also be honored by Mr. George Brown and Mr. Herman Brown. For 19 months, the congregation met in the offices of the Jersey Village Development Corporation when the chapel was completed one month ahead of schedule, with the main building to be constructed later. Many of the charter members went on to serve Jersey Village in other capacities such as Mr. Hardelick as a church deacon, as well as one of the first councilmen when incorporated as a city. After running the F&amp;M Jersey Ranch from 1938 to 1948, Clark Henry's vision of a residential homestead, complete with golf course, was truly ignited by the cooperation and enthusiasm of not just the new homeowners on the few streets leading up to and around Jersey Lake, but also from the surrounding areas, because it took more than that small village to get Jersey Village to keep growing into the thriving community that we can all be blessed by. Thank you.
Great, thank you Kimberly. Okay, those are all the comment cards I have. That brings us to the city manager's report. Austin Bleece.
Mayor, councilors, the report's in front of you, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from city council for the city manager?
Well, I was going to ask a question about the streets, but I think we're about to address that in H1, so I'm going to delay that question.
Okay. All right, then we will move along. That brings us to the consent agenda. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for consideration during the regular agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as is.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Shepherd, and a second from Councilmember McCray. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item H1, Consider Resolution 2025-15, awarding the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Ballast Point Construction, Inc., for the Australia Street and Solomon Street Reconstruction Project. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Good morning, or good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Recently, we went out to bid for the reconstruction projects of Australia Street and Solomon Street. These projects are a part of the 2023 bond program that the city is undertaking. After reviewing all of this, the bids, city staff is recommending Ballast Point Construction Incorporated as the contractor for Solomon and Australia Street improvements, despite their bid being $178,000 higher than the lowest bidder, Environmental Allies. After reviewing EA's performance on the past projects, staff and our engineering consultant Gage in Engineering have identified multiple concerns that could imp- Gage Engineering have identified multiple concerns that could impact the successful completion of this project. Based on these concerns, staff recommends awarding the contract to BPC. Although EA submitted the lowest bid at just over $5 million, their past performance issues raise concern about their ability to complete the project successfully. Some key issues identified include quality of work and project management deficiencies, pavement issues on prior projects, stormwater management compliance, residential disruptions and inefficient construction sequencing, and inadequate budget allocation for critical work. Given these factors, staff recommends awarding the contract to Ballast Point Construction, whose bid was $5,249,430. Although slightly higher than EA, BPC has a proven track record for delivering high-quality work, stronger project management, and adherence to required specifications, and appropriate budget allocations to complete the project without the risk of significant change orders. This recommendation is supported by Gage Engineering, reference checks, and evaluations of EA's performance. Based on their assessment of the city's own experience with EA, staff believes awarding the contract to BPC is in the best interest of the city to ensure high-quality and an efficiently executed project with minimal risk. If council approves this recommendation, staff will finalize the contract with BPC for the Solomon Street and Australia Street Improvement Project.
Great, thank you. Discussion amongst council on this item.
I guess, I was just curious, and Robert, maybe you can clarify here. You know, it seems like you guys have pointed out very well here about the issues with EA with the current project. What are we doing, or what have we done differently with finding a vendor for this one that is different than when we found EA? Because I've always been under the assumption, you know, that we always do the same thing, where we look for the engineering reference checks, we go through the same very rigid standards when we're checking people out. So are we doing anything different to help prevent us getting in the same situation? Or?
Yeah, so essentially, oftentimes, you look at the lowest bid, and we do the reference checks. We ask Gage Engineering to do a little further extensive look into BPC, and they have worked with them before. So that's essentially kind of what we go through. You go through reference checks, you talk to some of the project managers, and you kind of learn from previous experiences. As mentioned before, with MC Squared, I think they were like the second or third highest bidder on this bid tabulation. We were able to have them for Seattle Street, and you can kind of see the difference between their project with Seattle and this project as well. So, you know, sometimes it is the amount of the bids that come in, and oftentimes, like you said, if it's justifiable to merit going with the second lowest bidder based off of previous experience, then we're going to do so.
When do we expect this to start?
So we went to bid right now, so we can time the pre-construction meeting, so that way we can start with summer in mind, just like the last project. We wanted to get this in front of council in March, just to give us time to make sure we have those meetings and we're prepared to start on the first day of summer, because we have that time crunch again.
And from a navigational perspective, how much is left on Congo? Is it just a punch list and correcting a lot of these issues, or they have more street panels to go, or?
Tim could answer it a little more in depth, but I understand that some of these issues that we're not waiting for the punch list to address, they've been, you know, addressing these as they come about, but we are hoping to get near a portion where we can have a formal punch list walkthrough. Having one right now would do us no good, because it would be very extensive, so.
But I believe all the street panels are poured for the Congo street.
Yeah, the concrete portion is done. Right now, they're worried about the aesthetics and then, you know, topsoil and grass.
So I have some friends on Congo as well. So some of the issues that I heard today were being brought to me just in conversation with some friends, so I understand the frustration, I really do. Also, there was some discussion about a crack or something in a driveway that was ruined. Would that make it onto the punch list, things like that?
Yeah, yeah, so when we walk through the punch list, we bring the engineer, we bring Tim, we bring Inspector Bob, Austin, myself, and we'll bring a couple other Public Works employees, and we walk through the entire project and create a pretty extensive punch list. And as mentioned, we try to be as proactive as possible and get ahead of some of these things, because it's just going to come up in the punch list, so we're trying to get ahead of it right now.
And there's always photos that are taken before the project starts, so we get a clear reference of what the condition of something was before the project, and then at the punch list, if somebody tries to say that the driveway was cracked and the contractor said no it was cracked before, we've got those pictures to prove that.
What about the brick for the mailbox not matching the brick of the house? I mean, these are, can we get something like that worked out, where maybe we can take those bricks back and get some that look more like the houses?
That's definitely something we'll look into further, for sure.
I'm going to take this to a 30,000-foot level, just because I think order of operation's important, and we have a few big-ticket items, you know, here that we've gone through in the past. For this, and I know we had a bond over this in 2023, did we have, how did we come up with the amount we were going to think about spending on this? Did we go out and get estimates? Did we get a design on the street, or is that how we do things?
No, what we did is, we took the quantities as best, and we could kind of estimate things with engineers and stuff like that, and then knowing what we knew from the Seattle Street bids and then recent bids that had come in, Tim built a pretty sweet spreadsheet that we factor everything in, and then we put in the inflation factor. You know, back then, I think we were seeing 6%, 7% inflation, so we went probably 8%, 9% for a few years to make sure we can try and cover some of those inflationary things that you just can't always predict. But we did this out based upon quantities that were estimated, you know, with a little bit of help from engineers and stuff as well.
So effectively, we go after a big-picture, concept, best estimate based on best practices and prior experience, and ask the experts, and then we come up with something we all agree on, and then we approve an amount, or a top amount, and then fund it, based on true estimates, et cetera. Okay.
Yeah, and each time we get a bid back, we get a price per quantity, and Tim will go back in and update that price each time we go to the market, so.
On a slightly different note, I know obviously when you're saying we're going to go back and looking at the current project, are we, to the degree that we may run into situations where maybe the contract that we negotiated with the vendor might be ambiguous or may have not been as favorable towards us in resolving some of these issues, like, without having seen the contract, let's say, for example, the contract's very ambiguous regarding what they're required to do as far as the brick matching. Are we kind of doing a kind of a lessons learned process or anything along those lines, so that future contracts are beefed up to ensure that we have that teeth, so that if they try to pull that, we can say, no, the contract says you have to put this kind of brick that resembles this?
We have a running list of things we've learned from projects.
Okay, good.
Well, it's not uncommon for a public entity to not award a contract to the lowest bidder based on engineers' recommendations, so the difference I'm looking to go with BPC would be, what, $178? And that still falls underneath what we expected, or right about what we expected this project to go at, right?
So Ballast was 300 over what we estimated, Congo came in under what we originally estimated, it's a net positive on both.
So for the Australia and Solomon, right now, we've got roughly 6.1, 6.16 million is what we've budgeted for that. That includes some of the engineering and inspection services and those types of things, so this would all kind of fit into the budget that we've anticipated.
Contingencies, too?
Well, I think that this is, I'm kind of presuming the result here, but I think there are two important lessons, I think, for any vendor to learn, but particularly Environmental Allies, is number one, it probably is cheaper to do things right the first time, because we are going to hold them to what they agreed they were going to do. And number two, the lowest bid shouldn't always win out, even though, as you said, it's oftentimes in government it does, but I think in this situation, it is the amount of headache for our citizens and for staff having to chase down all of these issues, and what they may cost us in the long run, and other quality issues that we may not necessarily be aware of at this point, because that makes me worry about the quality of their work if they keep cutting corners in other places. I think it's well worth going to a higher-quality, more reliable supplier for a slightly higher price, to ensure quality, to ensure that it's as smooth of a process as we can make it for everyone involved.
I agree.
I'm going to move to pass Resolution Number 2025-15.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item H2, Consider Resolution 2025-16, awarding the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with John Reed and Company for the Ecuador Pedestrian Bridge and Surrounding Site Work Project. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Okay, let's start again. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Recently, we went out to bid for the Ecuador Pedestrian Bridge Reconstruction Project. This project was also a part of the 2023 bond program that the city is undertaking. This project is an important opportunity to improve not only the functionality of the bridge, but also to enhance the area's overall character, sense of place, and beautification. This RFP requested proposals for the demolition and replacement of the pedestrian bridge and surrounding site work, along with some construction alternates that council can consider if they'd like. The bridge, as designed, is 10 feet wide, but it will include bollards to ensure only pedestrian access, and the alternatives included consist of the following. Lime and fly ash, this alternative is a recommendation from the geotechnical engineer to use a material to stabilize the soil prior to the installation of the sidewalk. Typically, this is done under roads that experience heavier traffic and would assist in protecting the concrete. Given this area has been accessed by Harris County Flood Control, our parks, maintenance vehicles, and vendors for the wastewater treatment plant and lift station, staff is recommending that we include this alternate. Including this alternate will help protect the longevity of the concrete surface and reduce future maintenance needs. The monument columns, this would be an even smaller version of the small gateway monuments established on our Gateway and Wayfinding Master Plan. We consider one, we could consider one or two of these at each end of the bridge. Adding these at one or both ends of the bridge could create a distinctive and welcoming entrance, reinforcing the community identity and providing a memorable, visible landmark. Lighting allowance, this alternate includes lighting throughout the bridge to improve visibility in the evening and to add an inviting glow that enhances the bridge's visual appeal at night. This will improve both safety and aesthetics, ensuring the bridge becomes a vibrant feature of our community at all hours. Bridge painting, with the bridge's base finish as weathered steel, natural steel look, this option allows for the painting of the steel to a color chosen by the city. This will enhance the bridge's visual appeal, providing a more polished, intentional design that complements the surrounding area. City staff encourage the consideration of these alternatives, as they provide meaningful enhancements to the project that promote a sense of community pride, beautification, and improved usability. These additions can transform the bridge from a functional structure into a defining feature that residents will appreciate and enjoy. After reviewing all the city bids, staff recommend John Reed and Company as the contractor for the project. They submitted the lowest non-alternate bid, as well as the lowest bid, including all alternates. Their pricing without the alternates is listing at $688,405. The pricing for the specific alternatives to be considered by council is as follows: lime and fly ash, $3,900, the monument columns at $8,000 per column, the lighting allowance of $123,000, and the bridge painting of $50,000. The estimated cost of the project at the time of the bond was $500,000. However, due to interest earned and bond revenue and some initial projects coming in under budget, council has some flexibility to consider these meaningful alternatives without exceeding available resources. This recommendation is supported by PEA Group's reference checks and evaluation of the bid submissions. If council approves this recommendation and any alternate, staff will finalize the contract with John Reed and Company for the Ecuador Pedestrian Bridge to include such.
Okay, discussion amongst council on this item.
With my mind firmly ingrained in the idea that be careful what you kick down the road with these alternates, are any of them must do prior to building the bridge or during the building of the bridge? I'm guessing the lime and flashing would be, and everything else could be added on later as necessary?
Yeah, correct. I think the lime and flash, with it being such a small amount, would be good to get that on top, under the concrete, sorry, but most of the other things are aesthetics that could be.
You mentioned the interest earned. It looks like it's a little bit over a million. So if we earn that, we don't, if we didn't spend that on alternatives, what could we use it for?
So we could use that for anything that was authorized by the bond proceeds, or in the election from the bond proceeds.
So we couldn't go outside the bond proceeds? It stays with the scope of work?
Right, we can't use that towards a new pool or anything. It has to stay within the scope of work for this.
But I think the bond authorized the bridge and five streets, and if there was a sixth that we could start on, or something of that nature.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Just to be clear, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, so I know that we sell the bonds, and the bonds sit in an account that has interest, you know, interest earning, and I'm sure we probably also manage it through text pool and all that. But we are paying interest on the bonds, correct? Does the interest we earn on the bond proceeds exceed what we're paying on the bond interest?
I have to hold it. Okay, so at this point, I can't tell you that, not being familiar enough with it, but I can tell you that when you sell a bond, you don't budget for the interest income as part of your projects, because up until last year, there really wasn't any. And so I would consider this an addition to your capital projects, funds availability, and you can reallocate or increase your budget to spend the interest after it's earned. Keeping in mind, though, that if we are earning more than we are paying, we will owe that money back to the IRS. But we have a three-year spend down on the bond proceeds, so if we can spend them all within three years, we won't have to pay any of it back.
Color me shocked, but you're saying there is a situation in which the city owes money to the IRS?
There is, yes.
Boy, they get their hooks in everyone at some point, right?
The 1986 tax code, we do, could potentially owe arbitrage back to the IRS if it is in excess of what we're paying on the bonds.
I guess too many cities were playing slightly too clever of a game with that. Okay, I get it. I think I know where Councilmember Lawson is going with this, at least if I'm assuming where he was going, which is, it seems like it would be better to be careful in case there are cost overruns and other programs, and then once we kind of have a better understanding on those other projects, to the degree that we can do things later, and/or look at alternatives like, and I know that the problem here is also trying to figure out how to pay bonds back, that's, you know, obviously, we're constrained to some degree on how we can do that, but at least at that later point, we can kind of make a determination. The other option also is that we could, I know, it's kind of a, might not be seen as a favorable thing, you can go back to voters and ask for permission to use those proceeds for something different, if I recall correctly. But I think you have to actually, you have to go to another ballot item to ask them, to say, hey, you already borrowed this, we can't do anything else with it, can we use it for XYZ? So that would be another option.
Can I get a clarification on one of these things? The lighting allowance is $123,000. So since I've been on council, we have had, I believe twice, had to go and add lighting into parks for safety, for, we've had citizens complain about there being a lack of lights, especially in the park on Ecuador, I believe that's Ecuador, like on this side. So we've had to add lights there, and because that area, because of its access to Beltway 8. So I guess my only thought on is while, don't get me wrong, I would love to save money, I also don't want to, you know, cut off our nose despite our face. To me, I would be curious, A, if the lighting allowance needs to be $123,000. Can we get some type of lighting for less than $123,000, but still have something in the name of, you know, more, like, I get it ambiance, right? But I'm not interested as much in ambiance as I am in public safety. And so to me, I don't want to cut off lighting completely, because I don't necessarily think that's smart either, but I don't, you know, I'm not saying let's spend money to spend money.
If I remember correctly, because when I've walked across that bridge at night, like for events at Clark Henry, there is lighting already there, correct? In other words, we're not proposing building a bridge that's going to be in the dark, right? Without that lighting allowance?
Yeah, there is some light. We have gotten
Yeah, there is some light. We have gotten requests to light up Philippine, as well as that corner can get very dark. So we've gotten some requests as, but it is decently lit, yes.
Yeah, so this, I think this is more supplemental lighting, right? Not not lighting or no lighting.
This would be lighting on the bridge itself. Right now, the lights are currently either on the ends of the bridge. This would have lighting throughout the bridge.
Yeah, so there's some lighting there.
It's a walkway, a bridge people are going to be walking on. We're intentionally doing the right thing and making sure people aren't going to have their golf carts or their motorcycles or dirt bikes on it. But I just, for me, my, my, I would just be curious if there's something we could do for lighting on the bridge, possibly, if it's even a possibility for less than one twenty-three, but still do some type of lighting on the bridge. I just, like, I understand why you talk about let's do things in pieces, but sometimes that's not, doesn't always pay off either.
Or sometimes it doesn't get done, but I'm with you. One twenty-three is a lot, but I actually pictured a bridge in the dark, so, when I was reading this. So it's, I didn't realize there were light, there is lighting, so this is additional.
As someone who has walked across that rickety existing bridge at nine fifteen, nine thirty at night, I can assure you, there is lighting there. Now, could there be some supplemental light? Yes, I tend to agree that if there is a situation where, you know, when they go to evaluate it, if they say, hey, this could use some supplemental lighting, I think that would be the priority, you know, as opposed to more decorative or mood lighting or, you know, yeah.
And another comment, I'm not entirely sure Violet with PEA Group is here, but I'm not sure if they paint the bridge during fabrication, if painting the bridge after the fact might actually cost more than painting it during fabrication. So that might be a question that I would defer to the PEA Group on or the contractor.
Are they here?
Yes.
Can they come up?
Because if they, if they paint it during fabrication, it might be easier.
The painting, when they install it, so.
So I've never built a bridge before. So if it wasn't painted after it's been constructed, what color is it?
It's just a natural steel look. It's very industrial. You've probably seen many bridges like that, yeah.
Is not painting it in any way affect the lifespan of the bridge?
No.
So we're talking purely aesthetics here?
Honestly, I think this kind of comes down to whether or not, I mean, are we wanting stuff to, you know, we've invested in the gateways to the city. We've invested in the street signs. You know, we've invested in a lot of things. I think this is one of those about, is this where we want to make that investment or is this where that investment isn't worth it for us? So I, I mean, just personally, I think that's kind of what this question really is more about. So.
I mean, how much would the the options put over budget?
So the the limon flash was thirty-nine hundred, the bridge painting is fifty thousand, the allowance is a hundred and twenty-three thousand for the electric. So depending, if you did all of it, I believe, over the five hundred thousand, we're talking three hundred and eighty, I believe. Let me hit the, pull up the tabulation.
So we're talking an eight hundred thousand dollar bridge instead of a five hundred thousand dollar bridge?
The bridge alone is six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and these alternates total two hundred and eight thousand for all four.
Wait, now I'm confused. Where's that total number again? So because I'm seeing five hundred thousand, six eighty-eight, where's the?
So the original estimate of the bridge was five hundred thousand back in twenty twenty-three. The pricing of the bid without any alternates is six hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred and five dollars. And then all four alternates add up to about two hundred and nine thousand with the specifics being listed.
Sorry, I just don't see within the resolution, I don't see the total price. I'm seeing the alternates together, and then I'm seeing the original, like the bid, the sixty-eight eight four oh five, but I don't see the total.
You're correct. The resolution does not contain the total with all options. It just has the base price.
I want to know what that actual number is. So we're at eight ninety-seven. It was budgeted for five hundred. We can get it without the bells and whistles for six eighty-eight four oh five, or we can get the extra stuff added for eight ninety-seven. Is that correct? I don't personally consider lime and flash. I don't know what that is, but I do know what lime is, but I don't consider that an an extra. I do think that is, that needs to be on the necessary side.
Yeah, it's only thirty-nine hundred, and if it if it contributes to the stability and the, you know, ensuring that it can handle some of the additional movement of heavy equipment that might happen over there, absolutely. And I think on the lighting, as others have mentioned, if we can figure out a way just to ensure that we supplement the lighting enough to make it safe as opposed to focusing on aesthetics. With everything else, I feel like aesthetics, we can wait and see, again, making sure, see where everything else goes as far as the other projects that were under that bond before looking at, you know, where we can go with the rest of that, that funding.
Because we see that this project was was estimated at five hundred. It's already come in. Over six hundred, what will the other projects look like? Were there, what we could use this money?
Well, it's just like everything else, including eggs.
Exactly. That's my, that would be my concern.
So on the lighting, can we, I guess we can wait for a later time for y'all to kind of do an evaluation, determine what's what's needed in order for it to be based on what we already have as far as lighting? And then come back with a more, at least for that part, a more focused proposal?
I mean, we can value engineer the lighting. I'm just curious, do you want come back to council, or do we want to set an amount for Austin? You know, that's kind of where we're at because we want to start the fabrication.
Can we just set an amount and like, or given a, or do we, do you, can, does anybody even have a concept here? Because I would prefer to get moving on a project, something like this, than, because that bridge is sketchy.
Well, we, we can approve the base project to get that started, and then that gives us time to.
Yeah.
Because those options don't have anything to do with fabrication necessarily, right?
We just will need to make sure that it's built in order to add the lighting later on if if that's what you guys want to do.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea to 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 make it upgradable later on, but yeah, I think the the base fabrication and the lime and flash stabilization is probably the the key things right now, and then we can decide other things later on. Is that kind of what y'all were looking for feedback-wise?
I mean, I think we're doing it right the first time makes the most sense, but that's a council decision. When is later on, though? That's my question. Are we talking about when all the other street projects are done? Are we talking about like two months down the road when we can get a little better process or a little better number? I'm just, I'm not clear on when later on would be.
I think, at least for me, I think later on would be, yeah, when we, when we've got other projects going out to bid that we've got, we know we're not so far over budget that we wish we still have that extra money to go towards those projects.
I, I agree with that.
So the sooner those projects get out to bid and going, then the sooner we know whether we have extra cash. How many more projects do we have left?
We're not anticipating to let up bids for the next street projects until about this time next year. Hopefully, we'll have those bids to council March of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, I mean, I think the key here is that we're not foreclosing the possibility of doing those things since they could be put on afterwards, right? That's what I'm hearing, unless I'm mistaken.
We also just need to be aware, because, not saying one way or the other, but we also need to be aware. I don't know that it's ever been cheaper to wait, but I, I mean, I don't know that I would spend this either.
I was thinking the exact same thing. I mean, it's.
When has it been cheaper to wait? I'm thinking of a golf course.
It doesn't. I mean, every time we wait on something, it increases by fifty percent. So, or more.
And we do have, and I don't know, I go back and forth because there is, it's not, I don't want to call it surplus interest. Is that what we're going to call it?
That's kind of what it is, but.
And I'm, I mean, me personally, and nobody's going to be voting for me, so I can say this, I'm tired of cheapifying everything that we do for this city. I think we need to do something a little bit nicer and make it look nicer. And if this is going to do that, I think we need to take the opportunity to do it now as opposed to waiting and possibly it not looking right or it being two times, three times more expensive than what it would have been if we just bit the bullet and did it now.
I would, as someone who also is not on the ballot and doesn't plan on being on a ballot for a real long time, anywhere, at any level, I I can say that my concern is there is a narrative out there that I have heard from more than one person that and I'm not saying it's true, but there is a perspective that the city council, if given ten dollars, will find a way to spend eleven. And I, I, we were given the project to, we were given the approval to go build a pedestrian bridge. If we were talking, we are looking at safety issues and making sure that those are addressed. Everything else is purely aesthetics. These were not what were budgeted in. I I think that it's something we certainly, if we are able to come in under budget on other items, or at least not over budget, and we do have the extra funds, great. But if not, I think that just perpetuates that narrative that we will spend every dollar we're given, if given the opportunity.
I agree.
I agree.
And kind of down the middle, through the bids, one of the bidders, kind of, as an aberration, it looks like, on the lighting spent, recommended fifty thousand dollars versus one twenty-three, one forty, and one eighteen. Do we know any details on what differentiated that? And is is that an option we could bring into this, if maybe something to consider?
I can't answer to why one was cheaper than the other. I mean, maybe they had more experience with electrician on staff or something, but.
Or candles?
I mean, I think we could, if you wanted to set a budget, that is an option as well.
I'd rather, I mean, yeah, the problem is we're just spitballing at that point. I have no idea what. Yeah. Again, I think it needs.
I don't disagree with Sheri with the, and for me, it's every time it's going back to the golf course, which is so hard, the, you know, because that was, that's, like, that's a hard thing that to realize the, you know, it's the difference in the costs versus over, was it a two-year time period, I think? Is that where we were at? Was that the two-year between like the initial bid and then when it, and that's, like, that's hard, like, that's hard because we sit here and look at it, and it's just like some of these street repairs or the lift, the lift station. You know, I think the same thing with original numbers on that versus what, four years ago, versus what we're at currently. I just, I don't know.
I just always remember a saying that my husband's aunt gave me. You buy cheap art, you're always going to have cheap art. So, I mean, let's make the city look better. Our residents deserve it. It's not, if you look, the numbers are not that significant in the grand scheme of things. Let's, I mean, let's not be revisiting this in a year from now and it be a one point two million dollar bridge.
Well, I just want to emphasize, we have a bridge. I did it with the golf course because we didn't have a golf course. And we went back and forth over the golf course. We're going to have a bridge. It's just a question of paint, which we didn't budget for paint to begin with. Columns, you know, I, again, I, I mean, I know perspective is one thing, but perspective becomes a reality if if we continue to feed into it. We can always go back and and look at adding on to aesthetics when we've got all of the other things squared away and we know that we're fine. But I think that it sets a very bad precedent and is a bad look if we are taking a little extra and tacking it on to aesthetics without knowing if there are things that are going to go over budget here for other projects for which these bonds were approved.
Well, theoretically, we could just lump it along, reinforce it, give it another five years and not do anything with it. So, I mean.
And no one's suggesting that.
I realize that no one is suggesting that, but I mean, regardless of what we do up here, people are going to criticize the decisions that we make. So I think this is, we all have to make a commitment to do something that's good for this city and do something that's better. I don't know. I, this is not a hill I want to die on, so. But I think it should be done, and I think we should do it because it's going to save us money in the long run from having to revisit or wanting to do it in the future and increasing the cost associated with it. And then they're going to be complaining that we should have done it back then because now it's costing us more money. So, I mean, damned if you do, damned if you don't. And I think it's better that we do it now.
I mean, for allowances like a hundred and twenty-three thousand, is it uncommon for you to go back and negotiate down? How does that work?
So typically with an allowance, it's kind of like your not to exceed amount. I'm assuming here that there's some, some of the service and insulation and some of the the assumptions about how are I going to have to coordinate with CenterPoint? I'm assuming there's some assumptions built in here, but allowances is just kind of a not to exceed amount. It's possible that it could come in lower. I don't want to say likely, but it's it's certainly possible that it could come in lower. Did I miss anything on?
You know, sometime, I gotta say, one thing to realize, you know, everybody here wants, you know, we want nicer businesses to come in. We want a larger tax base. We want our property values to go up, but what we pay in property taxes to go down. So it's, it's kind of tough when we want all of these nice things, but it seems like we're not willing to spend the money to, on a lot of the things. Pool being one, not this conversation, but this kind of stuff, like, I get it, this kind of stuff too, and I understand, and I have to say, I, like, my first instinct is to say, like, this needs to be bottom barrel, like, it should be, it should be an effective bridge, right? But at the same time, I also want people to want to live here in Jersey Village and not want to live here because it's okay.
But here's the thing, I, I actually totally understand what you guys are saying. There's, here is an example of a need and a want, but also what I'm worried about is down the road, we, we spend all that money and then we're, we go to another project and we, we overspend, which Bobby had mentioned, I'm sorry, Mayor Warren has mentioned. And it's not going to be a crappy bridge because it's going to be a new bridge. So even if it's not painted, it's still going to be a new bridge.
And if you find me one person who says, well, I was going to move to Jersey Village, but they can't even paint their bridge.
You don't have to be so literal. Surely you understand what I'm trying to convey here? I'm assuming you caught that. If not, I can try to say it again slower.
I, I took it as literal as it was, I thought, but.
My thought is, and I can somehow rationalize this in my mind, the, the lighting, I think, is something I'd like to look into from a safety standpoint. It doesn't have to be fancy. It has to be effective, but not look ugly, right? We're not talking about the lighting over Montrose, going across Southwest Freeway with all sorts of designs. This is just safety. But can be purty, too. I'd be willing to do that and the flashing. I think the monuments and the paint, we can wait on as as necessary.
And is, is there anything that gives us an advantage to approving a certain amount for lighting now versus waiting for a more reasonable estimate, say, at the April meeting? I assume there's not going to be anything done lighting-wise between now and then, right?
No, but I don't know that we'd be able to bring back a firmer price in April at that point. We understand the direction, I mean, that that council wants to take this, I think. I mean, we, you know, the not to exceed, we want to come in as low as we can, but we also want the safety aspects and that to live. we also want the safety aspects to look nice. So I think, given that direction, we can, we can do our best to keep the costs as low as we can. We just need the council authorization to spend up to, you know, that certain amount.
I also want to point out, you know, one of the things people came and talked about, one of the big frustrations was that with the purchase of the property across the street, that all of the other stuff, a lot of the other things that had been moving forward didn't, no longer seemed like they were moving forward. And my concern is while this falls under that current, that past bond, this isn't, this could be another example of, oh, look, it was a project that was moving forward and now you're tabling, you're pushing off. And I don't want, I would like to approve something on this bridge tonight because I do think it's something that does need to be moved forward. We do need to, we need to fulfill what we said we were going to do, which is make improvements.
I agree. I don't, I don't think anyone's suggesting not moving forward on the bridge. I'm just wondering, do, I'm just trying to understand what it is we're being asked to do on the lighting. Are we being asked to just simply approve the $123,000 on the lighting and then y'all will just tweak it down and let us know what you saved?
Are you wanting us to give you a specific number?
We would need a specific number of some sort.
Well, I guess that's why I'm asking, like, is there an actual delay that would come from saying, start on the bridge? Because I assume the bridge fabrication is going to have a lead time that's well beyond anything having to do with lighting, right?
Correct.
So, if we begin work on the bridge with fabrication, we have ample time for there to be a, some sort of a calculation done as to, this is what we could do at this level, and so that we can make an informed decision. The problem is otherwise, and this is not a matter of trust, this is just a matter of governance, of ensuring that we are approving something, that we have a reasonable modicum of understanding of the costs before approving it. Otherwise, we are literally just saying, here's a check for $123,000, please bring back the change. And I just, as a matter of governance, I think that's not a precedent that we want to set. But that's just me.
But I'm looking at the bids. I mean, we've got the 123 for the lighting, we've got 140, we've got 118, 125. I mean, the 123 is kind of right in the middle of the line of where everybody else was. So it seems like there's something about that number just kind of feels right, that that's about where it would be.
If we want to just call it a 60 and call it a day, then fine, but, I mean, to me, I think that that would probably do it, but I would hope it would be less. That's what I'm saying. Do we need, that's, my suggestion is, we don't, because we don't know...
I think it's a do not exceed, what's on that page.
Yeah, I think it's a do not exceed amount. It's a, I think staff knows our sentiment on where we are, for the most part. It's, I'm struggling, is it a bridge too far for me to even include it, all puns intended. But I am, I'm actually, I mean, I'm willing to make a motion that includes the bridge amount, the lime, and the, and the lighting, and guide staff to not exceed that final amount.
Are you making that?
Well, unless there's any further discussion.
I mean, I'd like to see it painted.
Anybody's welcome to make a motion, and we can see how it falls.
I will make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-16 with the additions of the lighting, whatever that first line item was.
The lime and flashing and the...
Bridge painting with a do not exceed those total amounts, and we will delay the monuments to a later date.
We have a motion?
Can I just get a clarification? I want to make a second. I want to make sure I understand what it was. So it's the base price, or like the base bridge price with the lime, the lighting and bridge painting? Then I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Does anyone need clarification on what the motion is, or do you get it? Okay. No further discussion. All of those in favor? All of those against? I knew y'all were going to do this. I knew y'all were going to do this. 58 days to go. All right, this is the one. All right. So, under our charter, the mayor does not vote unless there is a tie vote. We currently have a vote of two to two regarding the motion. I vote no. Therefore, the motion fails. I would entertain a different motion at this time.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-16, approving the bridge amount of $688,405, the lime and flashing for $3,900, and the lighting for not to exceed $123,000 for a total not to exceed $815,305,000.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All of those in favor? All of those against? The motion passes by a vote of three to one. So, all right. Thank you all for not tying again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And sorry it took us so long. Okay, that brings us to Item H3, Consider Resolution 2025-17, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Brookstone LP for construction manager at risk services for the city campus project. Austin Bleese, city manager.
Mayor and councilors, as part of the city campus project, we recently went out for RFQ for the construction manager at risk. This process allows the city to engage a contractor who will provide both pre-construction and construction services to ensure the project is completed efficiently within budget and the required standards. The RFQ included two phases. Phase one was pre-construction services. During this phase, the CMAR assists in the early planning and design stages, providing cost estimates, scheduling guidance, value engineering, and constructability reviews. This proactive approach helps identify potential issues before construction begins and minimizing costly changes later. Phase two would be construction services. Once the project is ready for construction, the CMAR resumes, assumes the role of the general contractor, overseeing the construction process while ensuring that the work stays on budget and meets all the specs. So the city followed a one-step process for this, as permitted under state law, to evaluate and select the most qualified firm while also considering costs. That one-step process allows for the evaluation of both qualifications and the costs simultaneously, ensuring the cost considerations are integrated into the decision-making process. Total of seven proposals were received. We evaluated it against the following criteria: general requirements, firm qualifications, staff qualifications, best overall approach, documented quality of past services, and proposed cost, which was 25% of the total points, which was 100 total points. The committees reviewed this, and the Brookstone LP is the recommendation. As you can see from the ranking sheets, Brookstone is identified as the most qualified firm to service the CMAR for the city campus project. They have strong qualifications, extensive experience with municipal projects, a well-defined approach to delivering a successful approach. We also worked with them for the golf course clubhouse and convention center as well. So, the resolution here tonight would to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Brookstone LP for construction manager at risk services for the city campus project.
Okay, discussion amongst council on this item.
Brookstone's very good. They're excellent at what they do in their industry, so...
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-17, awarding the bid to Brookstone.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Although I will just, before y'all go on, I will add, yes, they did an excellent job on the golf course clubhouse. Very glad to have seen them bid. Very glad that they were the highest score. Any further discussion besides mine? Seeing none. All of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to Item H4, Consider Ordinance Number 2025-07, Amending the General Fund and Capital Improvement Fund Budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2024 and ending September 30th, 2025 by adjusting various expenditure line items. Jennifer Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So, in light of recent personnel changes and facility acquisitions, staff is requesting a budget amendment that would amend some, several line items to account for the payouts to the former city secretary and finance director. And this will help us to better reflect our current financial obligations. We also have the, with the acquisition of the new city campus, we're proposing to increase the electric utility budget line item by $45,000. The total cost of all of these, the payouts, net of any salary savings for the rest of the year due to salary differentials between Lori and Isabel and Courtney and myself, it nets out to $191,289.73. We're proposing to fund this by reducing the transfer to the capital improvements line item and reallocate the funds to the salaries and benefits and electricity accounts. The projects that would be affected by the reduction in this funding, there are three projects. One is the flood study, and we're recommending that we remove $91,289.73 from this project and rebudget it in fiscal year 26. The second project is $50,000 from the Clark Henry Field project. That project is currently in design documents, and so we don't anticipate that we will need that funding until fiscal year 26 as well. We would rebudget for that funding in fiscal year 26. And then the final project, staff proposes to defer the Village Drive Parking Spots project, which is currently budgeted for $50,000, and we could reconsider funding for that in fiscal year 26 based on priorities and available resources. Obviously, staff will continue to monitor the budget closely and will readjust our year-end projections as needed, but at this point, we feel like this is a fair statement of the resources that we would need for the remainder of the fiscal year. Have you had to answer any questions?
Mayor, if I can just reemphasize that with the flood mitigation study and with the Clark Henry Field project, even if we were to say go tomorrow, those projects would not end until the next fiscal year. So it's not like we're losing much time. It's just the reality of where those projects sit today. We're, we're going to have to budget this money next year regardless of whether or not we do this today.
So the, I see where you're going with this. To make clear, what you're saying is that these, these changes and allocations don't affect the timeline. It's just simply reflecting the fact that by the time that those expenditures occur, we will be in the next fiscal year, and therefore it's just, we're just managing the budgets in each fiscal year now, correct?
Can I get a little clarification on that, especially in reference to Clark Henry? I thought a previous conversation that that was supposed to be moving forward in May? It was a last conversation we had?
For the construction design drawings, we're not anticipating those to be done until like June, July. Then we have to go out to bid, and then the construction probably wouldn't start until about August, September.
So, we could still, I mean, in May, we would still start the process?
The drawing process, yeah.
My only issue is that we've made promises to people. We've sat up here and said, you know, we told people, it was not, especially with the Clark Henry Park, hey, it's just going to be a month or two. We discussed the parking spots. That was, that's, that's my reservation. But you're saying that whether we were moving money or not moving money, those drawings would occur and would be approved or whatever.
Right. The next checkpoint for the field project specifically would be once the, once we're ready to go out to bids, assuming all the land has been sold, that we've got the cash, we could do the bids, or we could halt the process like once we get the bids in. But we've got a couple of checkpoints for that project specifically where we don't, we can keep moving some of that early stuff forward without getting to that big expensive final yes.
I think the important part is we're not delaying those projects. We're simply managing the way that it's being, that things are being budgeted. That's really all that's happening here.
Well, then that has to make, we have to make sure that's communicated very clearly.
I agree. Municipal finance is not an easy subject. It's not, as all of us know when we come into this brand-new, it is like reading hieroglyphics. But, yeah, it is something that we're going to have to communicate to make clear that we're not delaying anything. We are simply moving money between line items in order to get us through to the next fiscal year.
I understand moving money, and I also understand when, you know, projects, things come up and the timing. The thing is in this, it actually says that we could, another hold point could occur before it goes out to bid. So I understand that it's not supposed to be complete, it'll be completed in '26, but to me, this sounds like we're pushing it a few months to make it fit the narrative. And I don't think that that's, that's just how this is coming across. If I'm misunderstanding that, that's one thing. If not, then I would highly suggest we try to find $50,000 from somewhere else and make sure that this moves forward, as we told people, I believe, two years ago we were.
But the problem isn't the $50,000, it's the million dollars worth of the construction costs. That's where the big issue is going to come in. That, that's the hold point that we're going to have when we get to that point where we decide, do we give out for bids or not? If we don't have the cash, above that 90-day reserve where we should be, then we can't, in good faith, put that project out to bid. So it really comes down to that, that timing. We've got, we can continue forward with some of the smaller costs that we can incur for the design, the construction drawings, but the cash flow at the time when we're ready to go out to bid is going to dictate whether or not we would put it out to bid at that point in time.
And I think that there will be some discussions happening later on in executive session that might play more into that than what we're discussing right now.
I'm fully aware of that. I'm just saying, you, you know, big conversations, big complaints. One of the highest complaints I've gotten this year is the delay so far has been the delay of the Clark Henry Park field, and everybody was under the assumption, they were saying, so buying the church means we have to delay this. And people have repeatedly been told, no, but if buying the church dropped the cash reserves below the 90-day reserve limit, and now we're going to have to push out going to bid by a few months because of these other things that obviously were not planned, like, we can't plan some of this, like retirement payouts. But that, to me, that makes me sound, it comes across more of like, maybe that was true.
Right. And council is fully aware that the cash position we would be in by purchasing the church, that we would be below that 90-day reserve. That was definitely a part of the discussion back when we had that. So pushing these projects, the bidding of some of these projects out till we can successfully balance that cash flow is just something we've, we're having to do.
You could, you could say the same thing about any project.
I understand that, but I feel like that probably should have been communicated a little better than, like, so I, I understand why this all is occurring. I completely understand it. It's in black and white here. But when you tell people, no, that's not what it is, when, yeah, that kind of is what it is.
Well, if you say that's what it is, again, you could say that about the flood study. You could say that about Village Drive Parking Spots. Someone can pick and choose what they want to fit a narrative. They absolutely can, and they do, and this is the time of year where it always happens. So I, that doesn't surprise me at all. But the reality is, what we have to do is to make sure that people understand that this is generally the case for everything that we're working on. And that what we're doing right now is really just managing that, and it's not affecting anything in terms of timing right now.
If, if council wanted to, I, I think we could successfully push the flood study, I mean, we could keep the $50,000 for the Clark Henry Field project. We could add that to the flood study line item, but want to change the timeline of actually constructing the Clark Henry Fields. That timeline is not being changed with, with this. It's the cash flow.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Ordinance 2025-07.
Before we end discussion, I want to ask staff to look into for whether it's in, at the budget retreat or in May or some other time. Three years ago, we revisited vacation and sick leave. These numbers are kind of eye-opening. They're aberrations maybe, but I think it's worth, we look at those policies just as a healthy effort for continuous improvement and make sure, stymie the chance for this to happen at this level again.
Are you recommending we bring forth changes to the policy? Every year as part of the, or every other year as part of the salary survey, we look at these things, but I mean, we had two, you know, very long-term employees, I'm just wanting to make sure that I've got the right guidance.
No, I agree. No, I'm, I think it's worth investigating, is there a, is there a better way that does not take away, that serves both employees and employer alike? And I'm not sure that coming up on these, yes, I get Lori and Isabel, we're long-term, but we have several long-term employees and it's no secret, people will leave a job one day, right? And hopefully under the best of circumstances, but it's also no secret that we offer vacation and sick leave, hopefully you don't use as much sick leave, you use vacation time and hopefully people use that as opposed to use it as a cash reserve, right? So I think we, I would like to look at that and maybe it's a, it's a one-off discussion between, I don't know, but I think it's worth revisiting. We did it last, formally, three years ago when we were talking about some long-term leave. I think it's good to revisit those again.
I will say, I know I, yeah, I remember this being brought up during the last budget session. I know that in, and I know that government's different from private sector, but I know that the liability you carry in terms of vacation, that's one of the big reasons why a lot of companies in the private sector will limit the amount you can carry over to future years. And I, I think this is a good example of why it probably is a good idea to have some kind of limit on that because, yeah, that does-
We do limit the vacation carryover.
What's that?
We do limit the vacation carryover.
How much is it limited to?
I believe it's 200 hours, but I'd have to look at the policy.
Dude, that's a lot. That's, wow.
And that's based off of eight-hour days, I guess?
Right. And I believe that was fairly common in the other policies that we've looked at from other communities and that's why we brought it up to match what other cities were doing.
Okay. I think it's one that, I won't be around for that conversation, I'll be out of office, but I think that it's something that at least should be revisited because that is, I mean, I, and this is an exception of the rule, it's not part of our standard policy, I get to carry up to five days through the first quarter of the following year and that's it. And part of that is financial, part of it also is I think that employees thrive and do better when they actually take the time off and get away from the job rather than sitting on five weeks of vacation. So, and the only way, I understand some people, people go into government work because they're passionate about it most of the time, so I get that there are a lot of people who are like, I'd rather not take time off, I love my job, that's great, those are exactly the kind of people we want, but I think that those are exactly the kind of people for which there needs to be a limit on carrying that much time off from year to year, that they need to be kinda compelled to take it. So, but anyway, I think that's for a later date, but it's certainly relevant here from a financial standpoint.
The other thing I wanna do before I second this motion is point out the Clark Henry Field line item goes from $1.3 million minus $50,000 to $1.25 million. So it's, there's still plenty of funds to progress through this, but I agree with the sentiment, we want to make sure that people know this hasn't stopped.
So really quick, whether the $50,000 was moved from Clark Henry, the project, or not, we are still moving forward in May 2025 with the design.
With the designs, that the next checkpoint will be when we get to the point to go out to bids and cash flow at that point in time.
And that would be in, after October?
No, that would be June, July, I think is when we'd probably be ready to go out for bids.
Of '25?
'25, correct.
And also adding parking spots, that line item would be moved to the fiscal year end of 2026?
That fiscal, for that piece, we would look at that in fiscal '26.
Do we know if anyone wants to retire anytime soon?
I think several people want to, but are they going to?
I gotta agree with Drew, that policy needs to be brought up in May and it needs to be, like, we need to be able to look at the numbers and the costs and make sure that we're doing what we need to be doing there. Drew?
I second the motion.
That might be the longest any further discussion I've seen in my time on council. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or does anyone need a reminder on what the motion was? I think it was to move to approve the ordinance. Okay, all right, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to, scrolling down, scrolling down, that brings us to item H5, discuss water meter fees and provide direction to staff for possible changes to be considered at a later date. Austin Blee, City Manager.
Mayor, I think this, the agenda subject on the actual posted agenda was more correct than what was on the memo there.
Oh, sorry, I was reading the memo so I can go on.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that we don't get ourselves into a jam-
That's a good point.
-when we talk about it. So this, as on the ordinance, it's considered ordinance number 2508, amending the Code of Ordinances, it's Chapter 70 Utilities, Section 77, to provide for amendments to the water rate schedules. That's what was posted on the agenda, but on the memo that's in front of council, it just didn't cross the same.
Thank you, yes. The agenda is official. Consider ordinance number 2025-08, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Texas, Chapter 70 Utilities, Section 77, to provide for amendments to water rate schedules.
So back in December, council expressed interest in doing away with the basic monthly service charge, commonly referred to as the meter fee for irrigation meters. Council asked us to look at that at workshop. During the workshop in February, council looked at several options. Currently, we have 1,480 residential homes that have the one meter, 750 that have meter and an irrigation meter. Currently, each meter has a $15 fee. So the proposal here tonight, based upon the direction that council gave us last month, the ordinance would eliminate the basic monthly service charge for residential irrigation accounts and increases that charge by $5.05 for residential accounts. The ordinance change would begin for water used starting April, would be reflected in the May bill.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? Consider we've, we have discussed it at length during a work session, but-
Maybe there could be a reminder. This basically means that every single residential connection, or I'm sorry, residence, period, not connection, sorry, would be $20.05 a month. So if I have one meter in my house, not an irrigation meter, my bill goes up $5.05. That's how I read this.
That is correct.
But if you have a regular water connection and a meter, your bill goes down, hold on.
Really $10.
$10.
Yeah, and essentially-
So it's one charge per residence versus an extra charge for every single meter.
So for the price of a cup of coffee, right, basically?
My coffee is more expensive, but that's fine.
Well, I'm a little conservative.
So just to be clear, in case there's anyone wondering like, why in the world is this change being made? A lot, there were people who were very concerned about, why, if I have one meter and I pay a certain amount, why do I suddenly have to pay twice as much when both meters are right there? We read the meters electronically, I'm not, I'm not creating twice as much work for the city. Well-taken. That feedback was very well-taken and we looked at it and everyone agreed that we wanted to reduce the burdens, I mean, I realize it's a small burden, but some of those burdens that exist that, number one, don't make sense from a cost standpoint for the city, but also to encourage people to, you know, we want people to have irrigation meters. And so this seemed to be just one little thing we could do to continue to try to encourage people to go out and get those meters without feeling like they were taking on a big cost for it.
Just to clarify, is the recommended motion in this memo the correct one? I don't wanna-
Yeah, the recommended motion is correct.
Okay.
So unless anyone, I mean, like I said, we discussed this at length a few weeks back at a work session, so unless anyone else had anything further, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025-08, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Texas, Chapter 70 Utilities, Section 77, to provide for amendments to water rate schedules, providing a severability clause, providing for repeal, providing a penalty as provided by Section 1.8 of the code. That's what I needed to read.
And I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes by a vote of three to one. That brings us to, let me just get to the agenda to make sure I'm not misreading anything. I think it's item H6, consider ordinance number 2025-09, amending the Jersey Village Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 2, Section 2-142, to amend the schedule of fees, adding tow fees and wrecker rotation program fees and providing for repeal. Danny Keel, Police Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Jersey Village Police Department currently follows the Harris County tow fee schedule, which has been, which has remained unchanged for the past 10 years. The schedule sets the non-consent tow fee at $145.50, a rate that has not kept pace with industry standards or the increasing costs associated with vehicle towing and storage. The tow fee is not listed. Currently, we don't have a tow fee listed in our schedule of fees. In contrast, the City of Houston conducts an annual analysis of wrecker fees as required by the Texas Occupation Code and has adjusted its non-consent tow fee to $225.50. The City of Houston's process ensures that wrecker services are compensated fairly based on the market conditions, operational costs and inflation. By aligning with the City of Houston's fee schedule, Jersey Village will remain competitive in attracting high-quality wrecker services for its rotations. Failing to adjust the wrecker fees could result in a diminished pool of qualified wrecker companies willing to participate in the city's rotation. This may lead to longer response times, reduced services quality and a potential public dissatisfaction. Ensuring that Jersey Village wrecker fees remain competitive will allow us to continue providing efficient and reliable towing services for our residents and law enforcement needs. In addition to updating the wrecker fee schedule, we recommend implementing an annual rotation fee for participating wrecker companies, administering the wrecker rotation program and curbing significant costs, including wrecker inspection, wrecker vehicle inspection for compliance with city standards, maintaining accurate records and authorized wrecker services in their vehicles, and assigning personnel to locate vehicles, answering citizen inquiries and notify vehicles of their owners of the location. To offset the administrative costs, we proposed a $500 annual rotation fee for wrecker companies participating in the city's wrecker rotation program. This fee would cover up to five tow trucks. Additionally, wrecker companies with more than five trucks would be required to pay an additional $100 per truck per year. This approach aligns with the best practices in other municipalities that operate a wrecker rotation system and ensures that the program remains sustainable. By implementing these changes, Jersey Village will ensure wrecker services remain competitive with the current industry standards, improve the quality and reliability of the tow services within the city, recover administrative costs associated with the managing of the wrecker rotation program and provide better services to the public, maintaining an efficient, well-regulated wrecker system. These updates will enhance the effectiveness of our wrecker rotation program and ensure that the Jersey Village continues to provide timely and professional towing services to its residents and law enforcement agencies. Did a survey in addition to that and reached out to the ones that are currently on our wrecker rotation and of the ones that have been the most reputable and on the longest standing, they're all in agreeance with this.
I just wanted to say I'm glad that the City of Houston's doing the annual analysis of wrecker fees and that we're not paying for that, so I feel like that's a win for us.
So you're saying we just piggyback off what they learned?
Absolutely. Save a little money.
It makes sense. Chief Keel, what is a non-consent tow?
Yeah, so like if you're arrested or if it's an abandoned vehicle or something that we have to get off the roadway, then that would be considered a non-consent tow.
This would alleviate effectively, or the practice we already have alleviates tow trucks from lining up and causing additional traffic hazards, et cetera, potentially?
Yeah, that's why we have a wrecker rotation that was, been in place for quite a while now in the city, is to eliminate that. Other areas, they just have a general broadcast and they ask for a wrecker and then that's when you get the multitude of wreckers. And so our rotational services is, if we need a wrecker, we have a rotational list in order to sustain and keep a good quality list of candidates that are on that wrecker rotation, that are reputable companies. It's essential that we raise that rate to, at least to industry standards.
So Chief, if, I understand wanting to have somebody there quickly because obviously the quicker you get them off the road, the quicker our officers can move on to other issues instead of babysitting somebody's car. Have we, what are, there's probably some people sitting out there saying, well, if somebody's gotten arrested and, you know, as long as we get somebody there quickly, what do we care about the rest? Can you kinda detail sort of some of the concerns regarding quote-unquote "not-so-qualified" wrecker drivers?
There's, there's several things that they have to abide by and make sure that their trucks are at operational standards, the inspections are passed, the equipment that's required, and then in addition to that, making sure that there's several laws when it comes to tow truck companies and making sure that we have the ones that are doing the things the right way where random urine analysis, annual drug testing and things like that, that's a requirement by the state law and just ensuring that we've got good quality. And then on top of that, with heavy-duty wreckers and making sure they have the proper equipment, we've run into some situations here recently where tech-stocked roadways have to have, they have to follow certain protocols for the lane shutdowns and stuff like that. So we wanna make sure that the companies that we're utilizing have all the equipment, have the, all the necessities that are required to operate effectively.
In other words, even though a guy just shows up, doesn't necessarily mean he's gonna be able to get the job done that you need done.
Yeah, so if you just showed up on our scene and you're not on a wrecker rotation, we don't allow you to tow unless it's just an emergency type situation and we gotta get the roadway cleared.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-9.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to Agenda Item H7, consider ordinance number 2025-10, amending the golf course budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2024 and ending September 30th, 2025, in the amount not to exceed $74,000 by increasing revenue line item 11-80-8555, tournament green fees, $50,000, increasing, sorry, make sure, increasing line item, revenue line item 11-80-8553, range fees, $10,000, increasing revenue line item 1180-8558, convention center rental, $10,000, increasing revenue line item 1180-8554, club rental, $2,000, increasing revenue line item 1180-8575, memberships, $2,000, and by increasing expense line item 1187-7010, capital impairment, $74,000. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This year, the golf course is on track to exceed our revenue budget in several categories as mentioned above, and we would like to use the increase in revenue to complete some course improvement projects for this growing season. Staff is requesting this net zero budget amendment to allow them to complete the following projects on the golf course for this growing season as we approach the warmer temperatures. Green enlargement, three or four? We have identified in our recent master plan study that our greens have shrunk over time and we have planted sod to enlarge two to three each year. This past, last year, we completed three green enlargements that merited success, you know, so we wanted to put money each fiscal year to chip away at enlarging the size of our greens. With the success of this enhanced initiative, we would like to do three more than we originally planned this fiscal year to give our greens the much-needed square footage boost for foot traffic. T-enlargement, our golf course master plan confirmed our assessment that our Ts are too small for the number of rounds we welcome this year. This T-enlargement would expand the Ts on holes 1, 4, 6, 8, 11, and 12, Lake 11, 12, and 13, a total of 10,000 to 11,000 square feet, allowing our golfers a much cleaner tee box moving forward. A practice area, our short game practice area needs renovation and will, that will expand the bunker, re-sod the green and install drainage to accommodate the increase in short game practice that we have experienced as of late. And then a lake cleanout. We've recently cleaned out the vegetation on our number three lake with very positive reviews and we would like to continue that initiative on our number 14 lake. reviews, and we would like to continue that initiative on our number 14 lake. With the new clubhouse and convention center, we've seen a pretty large increase in tournament inquiries, as well as the convention center rentals, so staff is comfortable adjusting these revenue line items. With the installation of the driving range lights, we anticipate an additional $10,000 in revenue for the driving range. We are confident with our estimate as we've already brought $4,000 in using our temporary light towers with modest weather. We've increased the quality of our rental clubs and have an increase in membership that represents adjustments to those line items as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Discussion amongst council on this item.
I just want to say these are good problems to have. I mean, it's... This is a result of the extra play that we're getting. We're getting increased traffic. The golf course is doing very well. I think this is... This is good.
Well, I understand that. I think it's a good problem to have, but the 74,000, that's a projected number. That's not an actual number?
The expenses of 74,000, that's accurate.
So that we're up that?
Correct. All the expenses total $74,000.
Okay, so we're up a little bit of money. Why do we need to spend it right away? Why can't we hold on to it a little bit and kind of wait?
Essentially, Council, we can choose to hold on to it. So we did not put these in the budget because we didn't want to strive for a transfer. We had anticipation in mind that we would exceed our revenue as planned. We went with a more conservative budget to... So we didn't bite off more than we chew, per se. The reason why we are bringing this to council now is because our projects are based off of growing season. You typically want to get the sod planted in the May and June months, so if we were to wait to put this in the budget next year, we wouldn't start this project until next May. Given that we have about 12 greens left to enlarge over the next four or so years, this would give us an opportunity to kind of get a year ahead in the expansion of our greens.
And you're planning to increase fees as well?
We recently just increased fees as of March 9th with the time change. We will potentially explore a fee increase in October 1st as well. We typically look twice a year.
So Robert, if I understand correctly, it's not that this was... It's not that this is a new expenditure that wasn't already planned. It's just a matter of accelerating what would have been next fiscal year, but instead y'all want to go ahead and knock it out this fiscal year?
Correct. We had this on our lists of improvements to make. We just wanted to have six months of revenue before we consider taking on this expense rather than budgeting that and increasing revenue.
If... One other question. If we approve this, do we... Do y'all currently have an estimate as far as where the golf course may end up by the end of the fiscal year in terms of a surplus?
Correct. So right now, we're on pace... We're $130,000 ahead of last year. Also, in April last year, we only had $155,000 in revenue due to the closure from the clubhouse changeover, so that's another $120,000 right there in that month alone. And then on March, if we continue with this beautiful weather, we're on pace to get close to $300,000 this month.
Now is that...
So we feel comfortable meeting, you know, our revenue expectation and requiring no transfer with this budget amendment, yes.
Just to be clear, is that just the revenue number, or is that the actual net? Like the after expenses, what the course would net?
Correct. So yeah, we would still net a small surplus, yes. Our intention is to net a small surplus. Now to that dollar amount, I can't say, but this factors in potential for any natural weather. We also anticipate coming in under on some expense line items as well.
And the reason I ask is because I think it's important that, you know, obviously because it is such a weather-dependent business, that if not spending every possible surplus that may come in, you know, making sure that there is a little bit of wiggle room there in case there's some bad weather that comes along. So yeah, I'm glad to hear that it's not... You know, y'all are not trying to spend what... Every bit of what extra you've got. Any other discussion on this item?
I'm glad we're in this position. It's a good problem to have.
I agree. I also think it's important to remember the golf course is a literal living thing. It's grass. We've got to take care of it, especially with the wear and tear that it's taking with the increased usage.
Do you think that next year we'll have even greater number than 74?
I don't understand the question. Greater number of it?
To me, this is taking money that we could be sitting on and spending it to improve it, which is fine. But then is... Would you imagine that this would... Next year, this will bring more... Even more money to the golf course? More surplus?
Oh, absolutely. So right now, in our master plan, we identified that our greens shrunk over the last 20 years, so we put an initiative to expand those greens with hopes of delaying a green renovation, a full green renovation, which is a very expensive capital improvement project. Wade, our Golf Course Superintendent, feels confident that if we expand the square footage of these greens, we can kind of disperse the foot traffic with new pin placements, and this would prolong the need for a potential green renovation. We tried it on three holes last year, hole 17 being the most prominent. We've gotten rave reviews of that as well, and we almost doubled the size of that green.
And this is net zero impact to the... Net zero?
Correct, yes.
If you were a golfer, you know the greens are very important, and it... The river mill, it goes around like nobody's business, and so the minute people start talking about how poor your greens are, the minute your revenue starts to drop off because people don't want to play that course anymore. So I think this is money well-spent in making sure that we continue to improve the greens. I've heard in my circles that things are trending upward and trending in a positive way, and people are excited about coming out and playing out here. So I think this is a good investment.
Not too bad for a quote-unquote dying sport. You don't hear that anymore, do you? At least not around here. All right. Unless anyone else had anything else to add, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-10.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to Item H8. Consider Resolution Number 2025-18, receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's final report concerning proposed zoning amendment changes so that the area of land formerly identified as District D, Jersey Village Crossing District, is rezoned into two zoning districts identified as Zoning District H, Industrial District, and Zoning District K, Fifth Business District, and that the zoning distinction for portions of the area of land formerly identified as District K, Fifth Business District, is rezoned into District F, First Business District. Courtney Rutherford, City Secretary.
I do have the report from... Final report from P&amp;Z from Chairman Faircloth, that they do recommend that the city approve the amendments.
Okay, great. Discussion amongst council on this item.
Courtney, do you have the vote record?
I do not, and I don't believe anybody from P&amp;Z is still here.
He's saying it was unanimous?
It was unanimous, thank you.
Thanks, I just wanted to verify that.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-18, receiving the final report.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes. So that was the report. That brings us to Item H9. Consider ordinance number 2025-11, amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Texas, authorizing revision to the December 16th, 2024 official zoning map as set out in Section 14-82 so that the area of land formerly identified as District D, Jersey Village Crossing District, is rezoned into two zoning districts identified as Zoning District H, Industrial District, and Zoning District K, Fifth Business District. And by changing the zoning distinction for portions of the area of land formerly identified as District K, Fifth Business District, to District F, First Business District. Courtney Rutherford, City Secretary.
So again, this was considered by council. P&amp;Z met February 3rd, brought a preliminary report back to council on February 10th. We held a public hearing tonight. Nobody was present. Anyway, P&amp;Z recommends the change.
Okay. Discussion amongst council on this. This is basically the action item on the report we just received.
It's just the map portion of the report, basically.
It's actually doing the thing that the report recommended.
I can fill a little gap during the P&amp;Z meeting in February when this was discussed. That there was a lively discussion, but it was all very positive and well-received. And, you know, the idea of especially expanding Zone F for more business opportunities as opposed to what it's labeled as now, Zone K, and then also labeling Zone H. There were some questions about certain businesses, but a lot of those were... Would require supplemental approval in addition to just being zoned in, so there'd always have to be a further authorization.
If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-11.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to Item H10. Consider Resolution Number 2025-19, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Ron Cox Consulting for a facilitated council staff retreat. Austin Blee, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, as part of the fiscal year 25 budget discussions, the council considered the possibility of holding a facilitated retreat to bring together council members and key staff for strategic planning. With the upcoming 2025 council elections, introducing a new mayor and at least one new council member, this retreat presents an opportunity to align priorities, define strategic goals, and ensure a smooth transition in that leadership. When we talked about this back in the budget meetings, council seemed to be interested in this. So a facilitated retreat would provide that structured setting where the new and returning council members, along with staff, can engage in the goal-setting discussions, clarify... And to clarify expectations for the term ahead. Facilitator help guide the conversations on roles and responsibilities, key city priorities, and the broader strategic direction. This will promote the collaboration, continuity, and decision-making while integrating the fresh perspectives from the newly-elected officials. Additionally, the timing of this retreat aligns well with the anticipated adoption of the comprehensive plan in the fiscal year 26 budget, allowing for the direct incorporation of its long-term vision into the council's strategic discussion. I've worked... I've talked with Ron Cox Consulting. He's done a lot of these types of facilitations before. He's given us a proposal for a total cost of $12,250, with $9,750 allocated for the planning session and final report, and an additional $2,500 for an implementation plan if the council would want to do that. Time commitments would be some additional meetings with the city manager and key staff, along with the city council and the mayor, one-on-one with each of them. The governance session, facilitating the session with council and the governance for up to four hours with the mayor and council, city manager and the staff. That governance session will focus on establishing the model for council and the staff to follow. Council and staff planning session, facilitating for up to eight hours. The session designed to establish a strategic plan prepared for the '25 and '26 and beyond as appropriate. If the council wishes to proceed, it would be important to send a date soon to ensure availability. Ron has indicated that late June is the earliest available timeframe to accommodate Jersey Village, so staff is seeking direction on whether council wants to move forward with this retreat, and if so, to establish a preferred date for scheduling.
Okay. Discussion amongst council on this item.
So we budgeted for this?
We've got about $10,000 in the consulting line. We've got the remainder of that would fall under what I have authority to do a budget amendment for within that same department. So yes, this is... This would fit in the budget.
Do other city managers do... Like, do other cities do this kind of thing?
Facilitated retreats are very common, typically on an annual basis. Like, every year, they'll bring a facilitator to do something like this, or at least when new councils are elected. If it's a two-year cycle council election, it might be every two years, but this is a very common thing that many cities go through.
I actually Googled the guy, and you'd be shocked at how many... Especially like, what was it? Seabrook, Bel Air, there's multiple cities just in the area that have actually used him on a regular basis for these types of facilitations. So it seemed like he gets... He gets a... He's pretty popular for this sort of work.
And his price point is a lot cheaper than some of the other firms that are out there.
Yeah. I also looked at... Apparently, I guess he spent decades as a city manager, most recently Friendswood.
Right, yeah. He's been a city manager for a long time. He's done the interim work as well. I think that's an important thing to have for a facilitator, to help that council-staff relation. I think bringing in a facilitator from the outside that doesn't have that history would be... Would not be as beneficial.
Seems like Iowa Colony put up a statue for him or something like that. I mean, it was...
And he was just named a life member for the Texas City Management Association last year.
I think it's a good idea. It's not easy to come in onto a council with like the... We've talked... We've discussed it before, even with charter amendment, that the on-ramping is extremely steep, and I think something like this would be great, especially with all the changes that are coming. I did want to verify, because I just noticed it says mayor, city council, city manager, his key staff. This does include the city secretary, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that she would be involved in this.
And the financial advisor?
The department heads would all be there. Yeah, everybody that would be there. Everybody that's in this room right now would be here.
Well, $12,000 is not that much.
Can we make a motion?
Go for it.
I'll make a motion for resolution... To approve Resolution 2025-19.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously.
So for setting dates for that, then, we can reach out to existing... The councilors that will be returning and the ones that will potentially be coming aboard to try and facilitate a date unless we want to try and do something they got now, but it's going to be so much fun.
Maybe Courtney could email everyone, or somebody, or text something.
Yeah, I'll get with Austin. We'll pick a few dates and send out an email.
All right. Y'all have fun. Moving on to Item H11. Consider Resolution Number 2025-20, action setting the date and time for the May budget meeting. Austin Blee, City Manager.
So staff's requesting council set date time for the May budget meeting. The May meeting is when the council sees the high-level budget changes that are likely to put forward by the staff. Council provides information on the priorities for the upcoming fiscal year and what they want to see. The last few years, we've done this before and after the May council meeting. If council would like to do that, we can, or if council wants to do this on a different weekday or weekend, we can work with that as well. At this point, the biggest topics will likely surround the city campus projects, city pool, major CIP projects. As we discuss those projects, it will also require discussion around how they're funded and what funding implications mean to other city services and the tax rate. In the past, we've done this before the new councilors... We've occasionally done this before new councilors that have been sworn in. Council elects are always invited to participate. So really, we just want to get a date that would work for council. With the election to be held May 3rd, the need to have this done before May 17th, setting that date and time now would allow for all parties to plan appropriately.
Just... I haven't... I think it's too short to do it before and after a council meeting, especially if a council meeting goes on for several hours. It... You know, oftentimes, we find ourselves the past two years going through a talk and then having to come back into the room, and yeah, I've found the prior events that may only take three hours, but when they're consolidated and on a Friday afternoon, or even, I guess we've done it on a Saturday morning, though I'm not in favor of a Saturday morning, but I've found those to be better, but I'm up for...
I would prefer to keep it to like weekend, or like weekday evenings if possible, outside of business hours, even if we start just a little early.
Well, Saturdays, if it's good weather, I'm outside fishing, so... But if we have to, we have to.
Didn't we not... Did we do two evenings last year? Was it two evenings, like a Thursday, Friday, or something like that?
No, we just did it before and after the...
It was before and after.
That meeting.
I thought we did one...
I mean, we've done it multiple ways, but I mean...
I remember one that was a full day on a workday.
Keep in mind, this is the May budget meeting. You're thinking... You may be thinking of the July budget.
The July one?
Yeah, because July, we've tried both.
That's what it was.
All in one day, which actually I thought worked well.
No, there was a May one that was all one day. We held it at Little Kitchen.
Yeah, right. That was your first, first year.
Before I got sworn in, but I still attended.
The May budget meeting, the entire time I've been on council, has always been done in one day. Uh, it's, it's varied between whether it's on a Saturday morning, or whether it was like on a Friday afternoon. I think Friday afternoon's been the more common one for the last couple of years.
Yeah, I think in the last eight, we've done all of the above, really.
I would vote for an evening over a Saturday.
I like the evening idea. Um, first, the May 17th, is that the council meeting?
That's a Saturday. May 14th is the, is the council meeting. It's a Wednesday.
So that Monday or Tuesday, or the Friday, Thursday or Friday before that might be?
You mean like the, the Thursday after the council meeting, the 15th?
Sneaking prior to that council meeting.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Like the 8th, May 8th?
Well, whatever weeknights accommodate.
I would say May 8th or 9th would work.
How, how many hours do we anticipate this to be?
Yes.
Two to three.
This is not the same as the budget workshop.
It's three to four. It's not the full-day budget marathon.
This is just the budget, the department heads going through their...
It's like the wish list.
Yeah, it's the, it's the high-level stuff.
My suggestion would be May 8th or 9th, or even 7th, May 7th, 8th, or 9th in the evening.
I for sure can't do the 7th.
I know Thursdays would work better for, uh, councillor Mitchum than, than Wednesdays.
What about the 8th or the 9th, Drew? Or Connie? Would either one of those work for you?
The 8th would be fine.
Connie?
What time would it start?
Five, six, what time, whatever time the council wants to. That's, uh, that's part of the discussion.
If it's later in the day, yeah. A couple of other work things that day.
Five, six, you tell me.
No, 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 like, even if it was at...
Because we can eat during it.
Even if it started at four.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
I just can't do any earlier than that, and I'll be...
Can we do Thursday, May 8th at 5:00? Does that work for y'all?
It works for me.
I mean, it's just, it's just us three.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not ignoring you, Sherri.
I mean, we're going to be fishing and camping, so...
Does that work? Thursday, May 8th at 5:00 PM?
Yep. And there is a resolution on this. Y'all need to, okay, so we'll need a motion on that resolution. Make it official. No worries, no worries.
Okay, I, we have to make an, I actually have to make a motion for it?
Uh, yes.
Okay, make a revol, um, make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-20, setting the date and time for the May budget meeting for Thursday, May 8th at 5:00 PM.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. Uh, item H12, Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Regarding the City Pool. This is mine. Uh, it's the shortest memo in there. Uh, so, the, um, I recently, uh, engaged in some discussions after council member Wasson called me. Uh, I also discussed it with Mayor Pro-Tim Mitchum a bit, uh, previously, and kept it at that, so that we stay above board, uh, regarding the city pool and some of the frustration with, uh, how to move forward. And through those discussions and digging back through a lot of the Councilman Hunsaker paperwork, um, we kind of developed a potential plan forward that we hope can find a way to, to get a plan that citizens would approve, that would provide a, a more reasonable price tag while also being mindful of the fact that we need to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And what, what we thought was a path forward that, that we wanted to bring before council to at least begin the discussions on this, not expecting any, anything to be decided uh, tonight. But, um, we understood that a renovation or a repair was just not feasible, or at the very least, it was not, it made no sense financially, for many reasons that we've discussed beforehand, notwithstanding the fact that no one needs any sort of high-precision instruments to realize that the one-inch-wide crack that runs the length of your pool is causing you to lose five inches of water a day. That, that was, that was something that's, you know, engineers could look at and go, oh, yeah, that's your problem. Um, and so we, council agreed that, that, that was something that was not going to, to work as far as repair or renovations. We knew replacement was necessary.
The pool bond committee also agreed.
Correct. Even, even amongst those who didn't agree with the choice of design, did agree that replacement made more sense. So it made no sense from a, from, from multiple angles to continue to have that pool sitting there costing money, uh, when we knew it was eventually going to be demolished. Um, and so rather than waiting for prices to go up and to continue to pour more money into it, obviously, the decision was made to demolish it. I understand it was not popular, but I, I agree that it was the right thing to do, and the majority of council did as well. Uh, so where we stand today is what do we do about a replacement? Part, a big part of the cost of what we presented to citizens was an all-encompassing solution that included new buildings and everything. The buildings were a big part of that. And so, um, one of the ideas that we came up with, looking through the paperwork from the evaluation from Councilman Hunsaker, was what would it cost, based on those line items, to build a new pool that as closely as possible resembles our prior pool design, the one that we heard from a lot of people that they preferred, um, or at least I heard from a lot of people kind of after the bond fail that they preferred. Um, you know, something more modest, but that postpones replacement of the buildings to a later date in an effort to make that a more budget-friendly option. I talked with Austin. Obviously, there's, there's a lot that we would need to look into in terms of a cost estimate, but we think that that, if we're being conservative, a $5 to $6 million cost would probably, because you would have to do both the replacement of the pool, obviously you're talking about all the piping, equipment, and a equipment house, because that needs to be replaced as part of that process, but keeping the other buildings. Um, again, it could be that it's more costly than that, but that was kind of the rough ballpark that we estimated based on all of the documentation and kind of assuming, uh, you know, a fairly healthy inflation number. Uh, and from all the comments I've heard from people who didn't support the bond but did support a new pool, again, it's sort of anecdotal evidence, but, uh, I didn't hear anybody balk at a $5 to $6 million figure. Uh, so I, again, we always have to start here with an open meeting to, to be able to talk with more than just a, a council member or two. So I wanted to kind of just throw that out there as a, a general concept and begin that conversation, so.
You're talking about a $5 to $6 million number that doesn't have the buildings, correct?
Correct. As opposed to nothing.
So when you get around to replacing the buildings, now you're buck up to a $10 million number?
It would require a bond. But I think it's a bond proposal that has a much greater chance of success, because it's close to half the cost of our, the proposal that lost by six points?
The proposal that lost had an aquatic center with a lap pool, a leisure pool, features, um, storage, mechanical buildings and all that. The aquatics features were $4.2 million. Everything else was contingency, just-in-cases, and some buildings that I'm not so sure, and permitting and fees and furniture, but the buildings were a large chunk of that, and I think we could have value-engineered that. Water under the bridge, there's that pun again. Um, it's done, right? But I think if, if, if we're looking at $4 million today, that's probably six, three, four years from now, easily, if not more. So I think you're, you're in the right ballpark.
But we're also staring down, if you go out for a bond again, another bond election, and it fails a third time, you're looking at three years, potentially five years, based on what's in legislature right now, that you could do nothing.
I will say this, and this is, you're exactly right. That, I, I think at that point, I, my initial gut reaction was, we don't go out for a bond unless we are willing to make what is a rock-bottom offer. In other words, this is as best as we can do. Anything beyond this is, we just can't. Um, I think that's what we're looking at. If that bond fails, that would propose to do, essentially be a replacement. It is a replacement of what we had. If people reject that, then they don't want a pool. They feel like it's too expensive, period. Um, short of putting in an above-ground pool and a deck out there and calling it a day, I don't know what else we could do. Um, it, it's pure replacement, and I think that's, that's the point, is by making it pure replacement, you take out all this talk about Cadillac, which was complete BS for the reasons that, that Drew mentioned, because a lot of that cost were the buildings. Uh, but if you just boil it down to a pure replacement, take out, I mean, anything else, and just make it about, do you want a new sustainable version of what you had? Not something that you could tape together and it'll maybe limp for another five to seven years, but something that will legitimately last for another 40 to 50 years for future generations to enjoy. This is the best we can do.
Is the crowdsourcing option even, is it, is it a viable option? Is that something we could actually do?
I mean, the city can receive gifts. Uh, where it gets probably more complicated is, I mean, once you put a pool on a piece of property, it's, it's like if someone's like, you own the land, but I own the building. Well, how does that resolve itself in the end? Uh, so it's, that's, it ultimately, you know, my advice on these types of things is always, you know, donation, fine, and there's, there's restrictions on that. I'd have to vet that out a little bit, but ultimately, it's, it's a, the city needs to drive the train on the property it owns, because property is, is one of the areas cities have a lot of liability on. Uh, or it needs to let someone else completely drive the train on the property.
So what you're saying, crowdsourcing is fine, but it has to be done from a donation perspective, and they are not allowed, that, like, it's, they're given essentially zero control what happens after they make the donation, and they have to be willing to understand that that's how it has to work?
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's, that's what that is.
And I've got to double-check the crowdsourcing and the, just in terms of, in case there's anything with that, but in general...
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, the crowdsourcing thing, I mean, what's the difference between that and a YMCA? If you wanted to create a nonprofit pool somewhere and operate it, you're welcome to do so. In other words, if, say, somebody wants to put, if a community wants to pool their money together to build a pool that's open to the general public, they can. And people have been doing it for over 100 years. It's called the YMCA.
Personally, I'm, I, I like the innovation and the idea, and I think it's, it's a start, and I, and I especially grateful, because I've been asking people since November, come up with a plan, come up, bring it forth to council, and, uh, Mr. McCauley did so, and it's well thought out. I mean, to the point where we're now discussing it with our city attorney, and we're discussing it up here. Um, I think it's, has merit to discuss, provided we go through one of those avenues that limits the liability to the donators, but also to the city. Um, it's not the only solution out there, but I don't, but it's more than one, and I think it's, it may jazz people up to get this started sooner rather than later.
Well, I have a few things. If the plan for a new pool design is to, in the end, closely resemble what is being replaced, why wasn't that explored in 2023? Why not 2024? That's where I'm having issues.
It was explored. It put her in the bond committee, and they didn't choose it. That's my problem with this. And it was, and it was explored in the bond prior to that. So the bonds that replaced the pool as it stood was an option.
But before even taking it out to bond, it could have just said, you know what, we're just going to replace it this way, and then we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Let me take a step back.
We didn't have the funds.
Bob, I, I think what we should look at is, are we okay with building a body of water and an aquatics facility, but leaving the buildings as is for now? Now, that goes against the idea of do it while you have a chance, but I, I don't know. I, I, but it's, that was kind of the idea, is if you focus on A, you can get to B. Granted, we've already alluded to our bad habits of not getting to B.
So to be clear, I, I just want to, just to clarify, I, if, I think the problem is that there's a lot of different moving parts that happened from the first bond to now. The first bond was complicated by the fact, and I know James Singleton's back there, he's going to say, I told you so. You know, I can already see it on his face. Uh, he was the one on council who expressed the concern that if you combined both the pool improvements that were part of that bond, as well as the pool improvements, that it had a chance of failure because of conflating those two items. In other words, a pool by, a pool by itself had a greater chance to succeed. Uh, as it turns out, I think that was a big part of its failure. So then we broke off the, just said, okay, the park improvements, we can look at it at a later time. Let's just isolate it to the pool, and let's ask a bond committee to look at this and try to look through several options and see what could come out of it. And through that process, which included public input, they did come back with a, a higher-end option. The thinking was, well, this still does have a, because people keep saying, I, I hear people repeatedly say, you put the same thing up again. No, we didn't, because we had a standalone pool bond. I think that it failed for a couple of reasons. One, this narrative about it being a Cadillac option carried the day, unfortunately. And number two, you also had, lesson learned, anybody else that's going to be on council in the near future, never, ever, ever put a bond issue on the ballot with a president, period. Bad idea. Just don't do it. Because you have 4,000 people voting, and I guarantee you, a large chunk of those 4,000 people have not been following along with the issue, uh, and they're coming in, and I guarantee you that a lot of them were going to hammer away no on any bond they saw, because there were bonds that failed all over the place during that election. So I think, yeah, could you, could you risk going on a May ballot when you're going to have predominantly people who are familiar with the issues locally, you know, voting on the same proposal we had last time? Would it succeed? It could. You know, I think the, the, it was maybe a six or seven-point difference this last go-around, despite the fact that it was that presidential election.
I just think that it would come, I'm not saying that, for me, that bonding is off the table, but I think it will come across arrogant to come up for a third time. That's, at least the way I see it as a resident, just like, geez, again?
I think, I think it's actually the opposite. I think that there are people out there who want a pool, and they want a, a more, I use air quotes, a more reasonable option. I don't think what we proposed last time was unreasonable, but I think this is, this is a way of just clearing the air, putting something forward that is, you know, I, I don't think we had to have a bigger pool. There was an opportunity, because you're talking about an investment that was going to last longer than will be here, but if, if it's a question between not having a pool or having a pool, let's go ahead and just replace what we had.
I'm not against not having a pool. In fact, I fought very hard to keep it, just like everybody else did. But what I'm saying is, I heard, we don't want to, we don't want to go into debt for an amenity, and that's what I got out of it personally. That's what I heard.
If that's the case, I don't see a, a way forward to a pool at all.
I think that we're going to have to strap up and cut on some things, just squeeze a little bit for a little while until we get this pool built. I just am really scared that if we go out for bond, we won't have a pool, and then we, we're back to this three to five years possibly to even try to go out for a bond again.
Honestly, I don't, if we don't, if we don't give it a shot, I think that's where we are anyway. I, I don't see what opportunity is truly lost.
What about Texas Parks and Wildlife? Don't they have grants?
The Texas Parks and Wildlife, they do have grants, and Robert can speak to that a, a little bit more specifically. And I've heard that comment on social media, you know, why don't we just get a grant for it? There's no federal grants out there for pools. There's zero. Texas Parks and Wildlife, they do parks and things. They might be able to do some pool stuff. I'll let Robert speak on that one. He's a little bit more familiar with it, but there's not pools out there for grants. Trust me, we've looked.
Maybe a grant for one ADA chair, maybe.
Well, there was, I think, I think a city in central Texas, it could have been San Antonio, had a, had... Antonio, had a, had a grant for a pool in a park, it was, I think it was a grant of a million dollars, so, would, not sure how much it covered, helped supplement, which is always, I'm not going to turn down a million bucks, but it wasn't everything, but I like the, I like the initiative, crowdsourcing, grants, saving, I mean, there's other ways.
I, I'm also just a little frustrated, Mayor, after reading your newsletter, I was somewhat offended by the way you highlighted the efforts of two other council members in advocating for a new pool. The tone of the newsletter suggests that these two council members are the only ones engaging with residents and exploring ways to move forward, which implies that the rest of us are not aligned. I find this misleading, and frankly, I'm insulted by it, and we should be working together as a team.
And that's exactly why I'm here. The reason I highlighted the two of them was because they were the two that came to me and said, we have an idea, we've been talking to people, this is what we have. I couldn't talk to anyone else until I got here, but I thought it was important to highlight the effort that they had put forward, and I apologize, that was not intended to exclude others. When I mention somebody in a newsletter or anywhere else, that does not mean that other people are not doing anything. And if that were ever the case, I would never mention anyone at all. So I apologize if that's how it came off, that was certainly not how I intended it, and I don't know that anyone has ever blamed me for doing that, anytime I recognize any council member's efforts of doing anything.
She's not the only one that feels that way. I felt that way myself when my children came in from the mailbox, reading it, saying, Mom, why do you not care about the pool? Which is very interesting, considering all of the work I have done, and all of the people I have talked to, and all of the meetings I have attended, so I also did not appreciate that at all, and I did not, I don't like that you're, what you were doing, whether implied or not, was insinuating that only two people on council are actually working for something, and it comes across as politicking that is very unnecessary. This is a community that needs to be working together to focus on a goal, not pointing fingers.
I think that reading that into it, that it's politicking, is just as much a stretch as reading into it that I was saying that no one else on council was doing anything. That's, listen, this is a distraction and is not getting us anywhere closer to a solution. My whole point was simply to recognize those who came forward with, no one else at that point had come to me and said, we think this is a way forward based on these parameters, and I thought, let's go ahead.
Just because, just because you're not the person we choose to speak to about things doesn't mean that we're not actually doing stuff and engaging with the community or anything else.
I agree, which is.
That's not how this works.
I agree, which is why I thought, the fact that I mentioned two council members and didn't mention everyone, that that in some way inferred that you weren't doing anything, never even crossed my mind, because you're right, that assumption is silly. So I don't understand why it's being interpreted that way. If you think reading that, that I'm implying you're not doing anything, then why is it, why would anyone assume that you're not doing anything?
People, a lot of people, a lot of citizens do not come to these meetings. A lot of citizens don't come to many of our meetings, nor do they watch it. What they, what a lot of people do is read your newsletter. That seems to be a more good, a better way of communicating stuff, and I have always applauded your newsletter for trying to set the record straight and get actual, like, factual information, instead of the garbage that's on the Facebook group page. And so, when, it was quite a shock to come out and to read that you're calling out two council members for doing such a good job and promoting finding a solution for the pool, and not recognizing council as a whole. That is my problem. Not to say that those two members are not busting their ass to work on finding a solution, because they are, every one of us is committed to finding a solution, but I do feel that what you did was uncalled for.
I will ensure that neither of my last two newsletters praise any one or other council member. I'll make sure I bring enough for everyone next time.
Just out of curiosity, you're coming back, all the stuff I'm seeing from, like, that I've read or heard through the grapevine with you and Michelle, with the suggestion with the new pool, is a replacement of the exact same thing we have?
No.
No?
My idea, what, the reason I called Bobby was, there is a lot of information going around about how a neighborhood south of Jersey Village.
Yes, and that's a replacement.
Is, is doing a new pool. Turns out, it's a renovation, and they're doing it much cheaper than $10 million, which have we explained, that $10 million is for a lot more than the aquatics feature. Their place will have a 400-square-foot clubhouse, which is probably, I don't know, $1,000, $100,000, whatever construction rates are.
Four hundred square feet?
That's what I.
That's the size of a closet.
That's what their FAQ page says. It's a new, new baby pool, which we are going to get, and a renovated big pool, and a smaller splash pool to replace another one. They went through conceptual estimates, right? Wet finger in the air, talked to experts and all that, and got a number, and then got all their people together in the neighborhoods and voted. Sounds like the same process we went through. When talking to their contractor, he, he said he was replacing the pipes, which I had forgotten in the renovation was an idea. And so, we had just voted to blow up the pool, and I thought, well, destroy, and, which we've been talking about, in fairness, since May of '23, if not before that. So I called the city manager and said, is it an option to delay that so we could discuss it in April? And he said, possibly not, but you could get a group of council together if the mayor calls a, a meeting. So I called the mayor, and we talked it through, and we realized, in, without fully thinking through things, I realized one of the reasons we decided to go without the renovation was, one, the value, 10 to 15 years from now, you're going to be paying a lot more for a brand-new pool, and the second reason was the land and everything around there, we already had an inch crack in there. So we came through, and then that brainstorming, we were talking numbers and ideas, and Bobby had mentioned the current pool, I'm still for a design that we can get for whatever, but I, at the end of the day, I think what we're talking about, rather than design, is go forth with a pool without necessarily looking at new buildings. It doesn't necessarily have to be a package deal. So that's how all this started, and that's, I guess, how my name got printed in several areas.
I guess I'm curious, I mean, we got, I, oh my God, I want a pool, I want a pool so bad, I'm still very bitter that the bond didn't pass. My concern with not doing the buildings, I mean, first off, I'm still shocked, even though I was told ahead of time they weren't going to be knocked down, I'm still shocked that they're still standing, especially the ones with the bathrooms. They're so gross, and they're so nasty, and, ugh, I just, I find, like, I'm just shocked of the idea of, we'll paint it again, and it's, it'll be fine, because there's no place at all in there to truly, like, it's just, it's not functional, in my opinion, and so I'm just surprised that that's an idea is to even keep it.
Well, maybe just crowdfund that part of it, then, or, I mean, if we can do this, I mean, crowdfund all the other things around it, that way the community is part of it, because I do like the idea of that, and actually, that was in my notes, something very similar to that. You know, that could be an idea.
I just, and one other, I think that's actually, that's a great idea. What about, how does a design get chosen with this idea?
I, I don't know, we've already gone through a crowdsourcing of ideas back in 2023, we've gone through a pool committee to get a design, and had the bond, bond passed, I think we're still going to get crowd ideas going in to finally articulate a final design. I'm not sure how that goes.
I think it happens the way the design and the golf course happened, council up there.
Well, there, I mean, there were opinions even before that, that were collected, or there were surveys, that was discussed with the resident, we talked to two residents, so in particular, do have a lot of feedback.
Oh, yeah, we have a lot of feedback, but I also know that, you know, you know, the pool bond committee, and I know it was, the vote was not unanimous on, like, the decision on the bond moving forward, but they did, as a collective majority, choose something that was not the exact same thing that was already in the ground. And I find it, I just think it would be weird to consider that, and that, you know, to have known that, to know that information, and then to decide that we're just, like, let's just use the exact same thing, because everybody's okay with that, because I don't know that everybody would be okay with that.
Are you talking about the Z, the Z-shaped situation?
Like, the Z-shaped situation, the lanes, like, the, yeah, like, having the, I think it's all of it, to be honest, like, pool design in general.
I'm going to say, between 2023, the feedback Connie has mentioned, and a consultant that provided five different shapes and sizes of designs, we have plenty of ideas to choose from, and if we metamorphosized all that into one, or chose one, I, I think that that can be done. I, I think the first deal is, we have to figure out where money is coming from, and get a timeline, and quite frankly, where, solidify where it's going to go.
Yeah, because I know there's the idea of it going back where it was, but there's also, the idea's been floated of it going, like, essentially here, or over there.
Yeah, I mean, we could leave the roof intact.
Stop.
Yeah, the, the design, so, I, I don't think it has to be exactly the same, but I think something comparable in scale and features, you see what I'm saying, like, it doesn't have to exactly be the Z.
I think, to that end, we want an area, a diving well, and fun feature area, lap area, and a shallow area for youngins, toddlers, et cetera. Is that multiple pools? Is that one pool? We'll figure it out, best practices.
Yeah, no, that.
I think you're going to have to have a phased approach, similar to what's being proposed at the, across the street, and until you have the actual design, and until you know what you can phase and what you can't phase, you're not going to be able to make any kind of budget discuss, or budget decisions, on whether you're going to be able to pay cash for it, or whether you're going to have to go out for COs, or where you're going to have to go out for a vote.
So do we form a committee? Oh my God, a committee and say, design a pool, come up with a design?
I think you're going to have to find an architect.
Because Austin's over here going, eh eh eh, I mean, I get it, because that's, also, because all that, like, we've done this, like, we've done this stuff kind of ad nauseam at this point, and so, it's, I feel like, do we just pick something and put it out there and say, this, and get pricing? What is it?
Honestly, I think it's been done. At the end of the day, it, the design has been chosen, and we just have to figure out what it costs to build it in '26, '27, '29, '30, whenever it's done.
Take the design, price it out, this is what it's going to cost, we can start here, we can pay for this in this year.
But, but we also have to know, are you talking a concept? Are you talking, going to a pool architect and getting it designed and get that? Because that's several hundred zeros.
And you get pricing without going to the architect?
That's the only way that you're going to get more certainty.
Because isn't that with the, with the golf course, right? You have to go through, like, because you had the idea, and you had that, you were told it was going to cost so much, and then you went and got the actual pricing, it's like, just kidding, and so, I think that's, I think she's right, you're going to have to, we're going to have to pay money for design concept to get an actual price point.
Could a TIF work?
A TIRS district?
A tax increment financing, yeah, TIRS.
That doesn't generate more revenue, it just earmarks it for particular uses, so.
Because if we moved it here, this.
The problem's going to be, you would need, it would only, if you wanted to move it across the freeway and use that pool to entice businesses to build over there, then yes, a TIF or a TIRS would work.
Just kidding.
I don't think, I don't think that would be a good idea.
Well, I just figured we're developing right on the other side.
Yeah, no, I.
I, I'm sorry, it, it's 10:20, and I have really early meetings in the morning, I think this is a work session discussion, because we could sit here and talk about this all night long.
I agree.
We still have an executive session.
Yeah, I got no problem with doing a work session to get into more details, just wanted to, wanted to, we needed to at least start the discussion, I had to start somewhere, and I wanted to make sure that everyone else was brought in so that we could really start to discuss this as a council.
Is there, is there any benefit to doing a work session on this topic before May?
No.
Maybe not.
Because it's part of the budget process anyways, it's a capital improvement project. I, I was curious why we were talking about it before May, I mean, but I also understand, this is how we have these conversations.
Just wanted to, yeah, wanted to start it off. We, we recognize that if, if you were going to put it on, hypothetically, if you were going to put it on this November ballot, then you would need to have something done by August. That's another discussion to be had, but that, that's contingent on whether or not we want to go back out for a bond.
Before we close this and go to council comments, and this can be my council comment, but it's under the, Councilmember Mitchum couldn't make it, her flights were changed by the airline at the last minute, so she sent me a text with something to add, and I'm going to paraphrase it, but I'll put it into the meeting records, her full statement. She thought of three options, and I think we've covered them all, actually, rebuilding in the same location, using existing facilities, or discuss, and discuss how we can achieve that during the budget workshop. Option B, relocating here for better cohesion, and option C, open, open it up to a higher, higher bond, or a, a bond that covers all facilities of the pool. She says her priority is ensuring we make the best long-term decision together, so I guess we can do that in May.
So we don't want this on the agenda in April?
No, it sounds like we'll, 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 we'll pick it back up in May, it sounds like, so.
Some of us.
Some of us. So, anyway, unless anyone else had anything to add on that, I will go ahead and move to mayor and council comments, and I will start down at this end with Councilmember Shepherd.
No general public comments, but before I forget, Austin, we were talking about contractor stuff earlier. I noticed there's some settling that's happening again on the sewer line, a little bit further, I know, it looks like folks were working on the corner and re-sodding on the, the corner house at Tahoe, and was that Carlsbad? But I think it's settling further down that line, too, if you wouldn't have, mind have someone take a look at that, I'd appreciate it. That's all from me.
Founder's Day, April 12th, and thank you again, Brian McCauley, for stepping up and shooting out an idea.
Happy St. Patrick's Day. Congratulations to Jason Man, Mahan, excuse me, also, the JV Police Department, congratulations. I also wanted to highlight the JV Senior Outreach Group. I visit with one of the members frequently, and I just wanted to remind everyone, you only have to be 55 to join, and it's $50 per person per year, and they do film club, walking groups, line dancing, book club, they do all kinds of cool stuff. Thanks again for all you, you guys do, JV PD and Fire Department. Also, as city council elections approach and political climate grows very tense, let's remember that your candidates are all your neighbors, and to just show a little grace and kindness, it really goes a long way, just be patient, and that's it.
I wanted to say a special thank you to Jersey Village Police and Fire, both were able to attend up at Cook Middle School, we have an event called 1,000 Guys in Ties and Girls in Pearls, which is essentially a career fair.
which is essentially a, a career fair for, for kids. All the kids in Jersey Village are zoned to Cook Middle School if they go public school and we are a Title I school. And, um, Cook Middle School, about 72% of that school is, um, considered Title I, which is socio, socioeconomic disadvantaged students. And this Career Day is, is huge. It's a big deal. And, um, so we had 1,600 students, um, get to go and talk to different people about different career ideas and different options for them after school and what they can pursue post-high school. And JV PD and Jersey Village Fire Department both came out and did an amazing job. I was highly impressed. We got a lot of really good feedback from them. A lot of students were asking me questions when they, you know, making the connection or like, so, tell me more about this. And I'm like, no. But, um, I was really, uh, it was, it was great to see you guys there. I appreciate it. I know that was a commitment out of your day, but the kids really enjoyed it. Um, especially, um, the life skills teacher reached out to me. I wanted to thank both of you guys for the kindness your officers showed them. Their students that, you know, have a lot of disability and, you know, really thoroughly enjoyed it. The fire truck is a highlight and the fact that you guys brought the drone, a, a drone example to show, big deal. So thank you.
All right. Well, uh, also wanted to echo, um, the comments about Founder's Day. Make sure you go out there. Always a good time. Also wanted to, it's, you know, as, as time goes by, you know, um, you know, th- these sorts of things happen that, you know, I, I always feel, um, bad when I hear about former council members passing away, but particularly, I guess as mayor, it's sort of, it sort of hits home when, when a, a former mayor does. And I got word not too long, like maybe about a week or two ago, I, I found out that Dick Ambrose, uh, passed away. I, and I apologize. I don't remember the exact time period he was mayor. I want to say it was in the early 90s, I think. But, um, never got to meet him, but I, I, I always thank folks who, who blazed the trail before us to make this city a great place and, and he was part of that history and wanted to recognize him and, uh, give my sympathies to his family. So, uh, with that, we are going to go ahead and go into executive session. So this time, uh, city council is going to go into an executive session at, um, 8:20, I'm sorry, 9:27 PM, pursuant to the Texas Sofa Meetings Act, uh, Section 551.0415. Don't have the, hold on, sorry. I'm sorry. Texas Meeting Acts, uh, Section 551.072, deliberations about reproperty and Section 551.071, consultations with attorney. We are going to go into a executive session and, um, we will resume the regular session after that closed session has adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.